Ready? Morning, everyone. This is the regular meeting, first meeting of 2021 of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Today is January 6, 2021. It is approximately 10:03 a.m. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for purposes of a quorum, please?
Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Hausman. Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Mr. Howard is here, but he couldn't be heard.
Muted.
Present. Commissioner Bob Ellis. Commissioner Lee Morris.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall. Vice Chairman Marvin Arrington Jr.
Present.
Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Rahman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Ellis is here. He is on screen.
All right, listen now. When we start the meeting, I'm gonna have the mic check all of that resolved before we begin the meeting, okay? Thank you. All right, please rise for the invitation by Reverend Dawkins, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are grateful for this day, for this new year you have allowed us to see. We pray now your blessings on the citizens of Fulton County and this nation. We pray now your wisdom and guidance on this Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Be with them this year, bless their families, bless the works of their hearts and their hands. It is in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Microphone's working properly. Yes, sir, they just had themselves muted. Okay. All right, at this point on our agenda, what I'd like to do is on behalf of the board and on behalf of the people of Fulton County, welcome our newest member, Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Rahman to the board. And Commissioner, would you like to take a moment of personal privilege and address us?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity and I want to thank the constituents of District 6. This is 2021 and I look forward to working with my colleagues for the best county in the state of Georgia. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Welcome aboard. Madam Clerk, continue, please.
On page 2, Consent Agenda. 2-001, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the County Commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration. I have no amendments today.
All right, no amendments to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All right, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington? Vice Arrington, all right? And Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, and I vote yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have two items that have been requested to be added to today's regular meeting agenda on page 2 of the add-on memo. The first item to be added, 2-0035, Fulton County HIV AIDS Prevention Care and Policy Advisory Committee. Chairman Pitt has nominated Jeff Graham for--
Okay, strike that. Now, that's not an emergency. These add-ons are supposed to be for emergencies or issues that are time-sensitive. My chief of staff, Carol, that should not be before us. No, I don't want that added. That shouldn't even be before us. I'm sorry. Commissioner Hall?
Is it on the add-on menu?
Is it?
It's online.
Okay, well, it shouldn't be. It's not an emergency, so I'm gonna ask that we vote no then to dispose of it. Wait, what?
We have to do this whole--
This is not complicated, guys. I'm telling you, some simply say it should not have been on there. This is not an emergency. Add-ons on the day of are supposed to be for emergencies or items that are time-sensitive. This is not. So how it got on there, I don't know, but to get it off, we can either hold it or vote it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if we just don't have a motion to add it, then it doesn't get added.
Thank you, sir. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next item to be added to today's regular meeting agenda, 2-0036, sponsored by Vice Chairman Arrington. Request approval of a resolution pursuant to OCGA Section 15-16-20A3, amending Resolution 98-0166 to establish a new local salary supplement for the Fulton County Sheriff.
Would you please, this requires super majority, five yeas. Is there a motion?
Our new sheriff asked me to bring this forward. I hope that we can at least bring it forward for discussion purposes.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman? Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Morris? Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
And a motion fails to be added to the regular meeting agenda.
Continue.
We never got a vote from the chair. How could it fail before all seven people vote?
How can what?
How can it fail before all seven people cast their vote?
You say you didn't vote your vote, Mr. Chairman.
My vote? I voted no. You didn't see me?
Okay. So that was three yeas, one nay. On page 5.
But that will be before its next meeting.
Yeah.
On page 5, Regular Meeting Agenda. 2-0112, Adoption of the Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have amendments to today's regular meeting agenda. Item to be revised on page 5. 2-0015, Presentation of Proclaimations and Certificates. The proclamation recognizing Phyllis Bailey Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman. This proclamation will be removed and will be presented at a later date. On page 8, as requested by Chairman Pitt. Item 2-00622, Request Approval of Resolution in Support of the Continuing Transition of the Fulton County Board of Health and for other purposes. This item will be held. On page 9, Item to be moved up to be heard after public comment. Bottom of page 9, 2-0030, Discussion, Registration and Election.
Anybody else?
Those are all mine.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I'll second this vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I want a personal privilege, please.
You have the floor, Commissioner Hausman.
I just want the board to know that at 11 o'clock, I'm gonna have to step away briefly from the meeting, and I wanted to share with you the reason for that. As you know, I represent on the NACO Board, I'm the Transportation Committee Chair this year. And the NACO Board was given the opportunity to have an introductory meeting with the nominated Transportation Secretary, Mayor Pete Buttigieg. And that is at 11 o'clock. And as Chairman, I have the honor of doing the introduction and introducing him to our committee and represent Fulton County. So I'll briefly have to step away at 11 o'clock, and I just wanted you to know the reason why.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
On continuing on page 5, 2-0013, Adoption-- Appointment of the Vice Chairman of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners for a one-year term.
All right, based upon procedures that we established several years ago, this is a year for Commissioner Natalie Hall, and I would move that we approve Commissioner Natalie Hall as Vice Chair for the year 2021.
I'll second that.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, congratulations, Vice Chair Hall.
Congratulations.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
2-0014, Ratification of Minutes, Regular Meeting Minutes, December 2, 2020. Special Call Meeting Post-Agenda Minutes, December 4, 2020. And Recess Meeting Post-Agenda Minutes, December 16, 2020.
Is there your motion?
We'll refer.
And I'll second. Any questions or comments? If not, let's vote, please. Commissioner Hausman?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. 2-0015, Presentation of Proclaimations and Certificates. The first proclamation is recognizing Amaan Fiqwa A Muhammad Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
All right, Commissioner, are you going to read it or with what does it mean, read it?
Chair, if you don't mind, I have the actual recipient here today. I would like to present it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to read the proclamation, Commissioner?
Yes, please.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a proclamation where his Imam Furaqan A Muhammad accepted Al Islam since 1968 and from 1975 until present. He has been an Imam in Griffin, Athens, Marietta, La Grange, Georgia, and is presently serving as an Imam at Masjid Al-Mu'mun in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas Imam Furaqan has been a full-time Daia, the propagator of Al Islam since 1989 and currently services 37 prisons and speaks regularly on television, radio and at colleges, universities, high schools, elementary schools and churches, and has had religious dialogue with both Jewish and Christian leaders. And whereas Imam Furaqan has made hajj pilgrimage to Mecca in 1989 and has traveled to Morocco, China, Sudan, Senegal and the Caribbean, Mexico, Cuba, Malaysia, Indonesia, and he traveled to Turkey on a 10-day interfaith pilgrimage with Muslims, Christians and Jews, and went on an interfaith peace mission to Japan and Korea. And whereas Imam Furaqan has served as a volunteer chaplain in Fulton County for the past 30 years, and he performs premarriage counseling as well as family counseling with both Muslims and non-Muslims. And whereas Imam Furaqan has been married to his wife Daia since 1974, and they are the proud parents of one daughter, Jamila, deceased, and two sons, Furaqan, Ibn and Hanif, six granddaughters, Asia, Khadijah, Fatima, Miriam, Rekaya, Naima, Aisha, Daia, Khadijah, Jamila, and Halima, Sadia, and two grandsons, Nasir, Ibrahim and Hassan Tajani. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners commends the many contributions of Imam Furaqan A Muhammad to his congregation and community and thus hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 6, 2021, as Imam Furaqan Muhammad Appreciation Day in Fulton County, signed by the Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Rahman, attested to by Tanya Aguirre, our clerk to the County Commission. Thank you, sir, for the ma'am, for your service. I would ask that you would make a few comments, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm accepting this on the behalf of many peoples in my life that assisted me to do the work that was mentioned, especially my family. There's a saying in Islam, whenever you do a good deed, it's feasible for the love and for the way of God. No strings attached, not for a certificate, not for a trophy, simply for the love of God. And I close with this remark from the Quran. The Quran says, whoever helps in a good deed shares in his benefit and his blessing. So again, I want to share it with all the many peoples that have helped me. Some Muslim, some not Muslim, some African-American, some not, and some I don't even remember. So even to the unknown people who have helped me over the years. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, congratulations. Madam Clerk.
The next proclamation is recognizing Reverend Canitris M. Houston Moore, Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
Commissioner?
Yes, also, if you would stand, the recipient is here to accept it. This is a proclamation where Reverend Canitris M. Houston Moore accepted the call to the ministry in May 2002 and admitted for training under the AME Board of Examiners and delivered her initial sermon and was licensed to preach the gospel in December 2002. She was ordained as an interment deacon in May 2005 and as an interment elder in May 2008 at the Atlanta North Georgia Annual Conference by Bishop William P. Devoe. And whereas Pastor Moore earned her bachelor's degree in interpersonal and organizational communication with a minor in Spanish from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And in May 2008, she earned her Master of Divinity degree from Emory University's Candler School of Theology. And whereas in 2003, Pastor Moore started a Bible study-based ministry named Saturdays in Christ, which was an unofficially recognized and officially, excuse me, recognized campus organization at UNC Chapel Hill. And in 2007, she was the youngest recipient of Delta Sigma Theta's Pinnacle Leadership Award, which honors African-American women who make contributions to society and impact the lives of others. And in 2008, she introduced Gabriel's House Incorporated to the community of Faribault, Georgia, a youth center that installs values of self-worth through performing arts, life skills, training and academic enrichment. Whereas Pastor Moore has served as youth pastor and assistant pastor of St. John AME Church in Faribault, Georgia, pastor of St. Luke AME Church in Athens, Georgia. And in 2012, she was appointed as the senior pastor of the Greater Ward Chapel AME Church in Columbus, Georgia. In 2016, she was appointed the first female and 38th pastor of Trinity AME Church in Atlanta, Georgia, where she serves a quality-rated early learning center and a vibrant growing congregation. And whereas Pastor Moore is the devoted wife of the Reverend Kevin T. Moore and the daughter of Benita and Harold Houston Jr. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners commends the dedication and contributions of Reverend Canitris M. Houston Moore to her congregation and community and thus hereby proclaim Wednesday, January 6, 2021, as Reverend Canitris M. Houston Moore Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Fulton County Board of Commissioners, Khadijah Abdul-Rahman, and attested to by Tanya Aguirre. Thank you, Reverend Houston Moore. You know, I call you Pastor C, so I just got to tell everybody. I love Pastor C. I'm gonna ask you just a few words, please, final two.
Thank you so much. As the senior pastor of Trinity AME Church and a daughter of Fulton County, I am delighted and honored to be here and be honored for this proclamation and indebted to the county, to South Fulton County, for my rearing. And so it is my, indeed, honor and pleasure to now be graced with this honor, and it is, you know, my belief that we continue to serve not just those who are in our immediate circle, but we reach back and serve those who raised us. And so today I commend this to my family and to the entire South Fulton County community for raising me.
Thank you, Rev.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
On page 6, Public Hearing. 2-0016, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment, register it online to join the public comment portion of the Zoom call or can submit public comment in by email or by filling out the form located on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. Public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes.
Mr. Corbett?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two emails that we received, public comment. I'll read the first of them. First of these is from Barbara Burson of Atlanta. Concerns, District 4, Venetian Hills, Oakland City, illegal dumping needs to be addressed. Vacant properties, 911 fee with sanitation fees constantly increasing. Pavement of community streets, thank you. The second of these comments is from Alice Samuels of Atlanta. Commissioners, we are asking you not to vote in the affirmative for the Board of Health transitions. We need time to get more of our questions answered and not wait to after the vote for information about our livelihood. Many of the questions that we need to know were shared that we would find out after the vote when we meet with HR about the RIF and benefits. We found out that the state matches 3% and not the same as Fulton County. We also know that the county pays and premiums are higher for health. Plus, we have to start all over with accrual of our sick and vacation like we are new public health employees. This does not benefit employees. This benefits Board of Health. We need time to understand better. Please do not vote on this transition now. That is the last of the public comments we got via email, sir.
Mr. Howard?
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Appreciate this. Happy New Year to everyone. So greetings, Commissioners, and greetings also to you citizens of Fulton County who are watching and are listening to your county government acting in our behalf. Ben Howard, Senior Advocate, Public Policy Analyst. At the meeting of the Fulton County Board of Elections last year, the Atlanta Neighborhood Planning Unit System was mentioned. In that regard, permit me to suggest that we collaborate with the City of Atlanta Municipal Clerk Boris Webb III, who is also the designated state elections representative for the city. He can help bring the 25 neighborhood planning units into our picture. With the announcement of Diane Williamson, current Director of the Council on Aging, the longevity of that esteemed organization is in jeopardy. The contributions to Fulton County of the Council on Aging and its members are countless. I ask that you place the organization into benign receivership and find an entity other than the Department of Aging and Youth Services, which will seek out a new director and also an assistant director, who with your help will set the Council on Aging back on its feet. There are many reasons why the Council on Aging should not go gently into that dark night. I give you these four as starters. Father HJC Bowden, Dorothy Benson, Helene S. Mills, Harriet, and Emma Darnell. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Matt Finn, do you wish to speak for public comment? Anyone? Okay, sorry. And Russ Pine, do you wish to speak for public comment?
No further speakers.
No further speakers. Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Okay, next item that was moved up today on page 9, bottom of page 9, 2-0030, Discussion, Registration and Elections Update.
Mr. Barron? Mr. Barron? Ms. Corbett? All right, he was informed. Actually, is he here?
Mr. Chairman, he is not here right now. If you would give me just a moment, I will reach him. I apologize. I thought he was on the line. Give me one moment, Mr. Chairman.
Can you try to reach him, too?
You don't want me to talk, so.
Mr. Barron, he is en route. He'll be here in just a moment.
Mr. Barron? If there are no objections in the interest of time, let's hold off on the county manager's report and go to the, that will be item 0017, 0018, 0019, and go to the 0020. You said on that one, Madam Clerk, rather wait for Mr. Barron.
Yes, on the bottom of page 6, 2-0020, Information Technology. Yes, on the bottom of, bottom of page six, 2-0020, Information Technology, Requesting
Mr. Barron?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Richard Barron, Director of Registration And Elections. We had a very successful election day yesterday. 250 polling locations opened on time. We have approximately 7,500 absentee by mail ballots that we are going to upload today, and that will conclude the absentee by mail until Friday, when we do YOCAVA and overseas, or military and overseas ballots. We will then have provisional ballots. We are congregating all of the provisional ballots right now, and we should have a provisional figure by the end of the day today. We, we had, during early voting, we had 33 polling locations open. We had 271,062 people vote early. We had 101,146 people vote on Election Day yesterday. That was not quite double of the, the figure for November, but it was significantly more by about 40,000 votes. The absentee total right now is at 103,697. And as I told you, we will be updating, we have the Vote Review Panel scheduled for 3:00 PM today for, for them to adjudicate any ballots that need to have a voter intent determined. And we had relatively few issues yesterday, and it was actually a very smooth day from start to finish. I think early voting was probably the, it might have been the smoothest early voting we've ever, we've ever administered. And with that, I can take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Barron?
I just have one quick question. I know you're still counting, Mr. Barron, and do you have any idea when you think you'll have, outside of the military ballots, everything posted? Will that be today?
Yeah, so after the, the Vote Review Panel meets at 3:00 PM, we'll post the absentee by mail totals.
Okay. And then how late did y'all count last night? I've had some inquiries about that as well.
We had all of the Election Day precincts in but one before, before midnight. And then we finished uploading, early voting at about 8:30. We, we released some absentee, the bulk of the absentee, just after 7:00 PM. And then Election Day, I think all but one were completed before midnight.
Well, compliments on that, because I have to tell you, I got a lot of communication last night, surprise communication about us reporting so early. So kudos to you and your team for doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we did some, we tried to do some different things at the check-in centers as well, and I think that extra training helped.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Barron, I'm sorry, Chairman. I wanted to make a statement to Mr. Barron.
Go ahead, Commissioner. You have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, you know, in the past, I have just, I have been very vocal when things were wrong. And so I want to go publicly on record and thank you and the staff of Fulton County. I saw where you all worked through challenges. I did get a few phone calls yesterday, but they were more or less persons voting in the incorrect precinct, and we was able to get them to the correct precinct. But I just want to go on record to thank you and your staff. I was pleasantly pleased with what I saw out personally yesterday. And as the numbers came in and, and it smoothed, like I, I will agree with you, especially for the early voting, that's the smoothest that I ever seen it. And I just want to personally go on record to thank you and all of the staff. I think you all did a great job yesterday.
Thank you. My, yeah, my staff will, will appreciate your comments as well as Commissioner Houseman's.
All right, other questions or comments, Commissioners?
Yeah, I just had a couple of, Mr. Chair.
All right, Commissioner Ellis, you have the floor.
Mr. Barron, the, do you have any sense of kind of the volume of provisional ballots? And I was a little bit dismayed when I learned yesterday that a particular precinct or voting location in my district, they had about 624 votes cast, and 346 of those were provisions.
You know which location?
I believe the precinct, I can give you, I think, the precinct number. I think it's a...
It's Hopewell Metro, is it not?
No, this is in Sandy Springs, 1917.
Was it the North Annex?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yeah, the, the North Annex and CT Martin usually get high amounts of provisional ballots because they are early voting sites. And for some reason, those two early voting sites, a lot of people will, will go to those and vote, voted either one of those sites. And that happened again at both of them yesterday.
Okay, well, my, then I guess going back to my, still a very high number.
Yes.
I don't remember it being that high during the, during the general. Do you have, when, do you have a sense of how many provisional ballots there are outstanding?
I don't. My staff right now has, have, they have all the bags, so they have to open all of those and go through the provisional lists and then compute how many are in each precinct.
Okay. And then can you repeat the number again of, I, I know right now kind of that the news reports are suggesting that we have 4,000 absentee ballots outstanding, but I believe you gave a different number.
I, I think where they got that 4,000 figure is from the number that had been transferred over last night to go through signature verification, just to begin the signature verification process. But we have close to 7,500 to add to the results.
Okay. It, it's, it's, yeah, I know it, I think maybe the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, there were some questions about the observation process. And it's my understanding that there was a court ruling yesterday or maybe the day before, which mandated different observation be put in place. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was a, a consent order was agreed to yesterday, the county attorney's office, and we were on with another attorney. And we, basically what we agreed to certain parameters for monitors that, that were there and giving them more access. And we negotiated distance, distance requirements and, and a couple other minor measures.
Okay, so these are things that we could have avoided and agreed to on the front end had we, had we chosen to. Instead, we had to go through a court process to...
I, well, I don't think so. Yesterday, there was, I, I think the county attorney's office got about 24 minutes notice of this hearing. And I know that Cobb County, I think the day before may have agreed to something similar. So I, I don't know that I would characterize it as being something that we could have done on the front end because, but it would have been nicer to do it then, that's for sure, to, to come to some agreement instead of doing it on Election Day.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the one thing I do wanted to say, too, is I came in in haste, is just, I really want to recognize all the county departments that helped us throughout this year, from the county manager's office, the, the staff and strategy, finance, being patient and, and helping us. We had, we had at the last moment help from Dream in different ways, whatever we needed from every part of this county, all of the staff, the library staff that I, I can think of that worked as line managers. And it was, this whole year was a true team effort, and it, it makes you proud to work for Fulton County because I don't know if, how it, how it is at other counties within that regard. But we wouldn't have had the success we did without the leadership from the top and, and everyone giving us a hand. So I, I want to make sure that everyone knows how appreciative my staff is for all of those efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Commissioners, anyone else? All right, no further questions or comments from Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Barron, for your report. And just, is someone else? I was just passing a note that there was one other person during public comment, who I guess her microphone wasn't working. We need to have her comments read into the record from Donna Renfro Lawson, who has her comments.
Darren.
Mr. Carver? Mr. Carver? See there? All right, we'll come back to it, and then, all right, continue, Madam Plurk.
Continuing on page six, under Open And Responsible Government, 2-0017, County Manager, Presentation Of The COVID-19 Operational Response Update.
All right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Good morning Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. We'd like to certainly say Happy New Year. We'd also like to say we left COVID-19 back in 2020, but that's, that's clearly not the case. We'll spend a good bit of time stepping through the COVID statistics this morning because they are daunting. We have a new high of number of new cases in December, over 13,000. We're up to 540 as the seven-day average, representing really the apex of a second wave. We're still below 9% of the caseload in Georgia, and that's about half where we started from. But with a seven-day average increasing 140%, it is alarming. By the way, hospitalizations are up 300%, and the positive test rate has doubled to now over 13%. And all of that is since December the 1st. So you'll hear those statistics as we walk through, and I think it's fairly clear that that creates a lot of pressure on testing demand, bed availability, which we're very focused on, and even our morgue census. And so as we expand to address those needs using some of the temporary facilities that we planned for early on, we do have the ability to support this increased volume, but it is creating significant pressure. Speaking of testing, of course, it's been our strong suit. We're now at 1.2 million tests, having been administered, representing 22% of all the tests in Georgia, and I think that's accrued to the benefit of our citizens. The good news is, of course, that the vaccines are becoming widely available with the plan expansion beyond the long-term care facilities, healthcare workers and first responders on or about the 11th of January. Dr. Paxton will talk with you about the detailed planning that we're now engaged in. I have visited North Point and Mercedes-Benz locations where we've already moved into action. But you'll, you'll see that there is still much to do to scale this up. And I think Dr. Paxton will do a great job, along with Matt and his team, of explaining where we are and setting expectations in the right way with public. We are well-prepared, I think, though, to support this effort, both with management, attention, staff, the EMSI, planning resources, facilities, and even near-term financial resources. Because as you know, there's no federal dollars that yet have been received at any level of, of scale. Again, we can discuss next version of COVID, what we, or excuse me, the CARES Act, and what we know from that. But in the near term, having resources to support this effort in the same way that you allowed us to do with the initial COVID response, I think, I think is critical. We do have confidence in our approach, and one, one of the things that I've asked our Chief Operating Officer, Anna Roach, to do this morning is briefly, with a one-page, or give you a quick summary of what I think was a Herculean effort and a set of terrific outcomes from 2020. We're not looking for a pat on the back, but rather just the recognition that we know how to tackle these issues, even when there are a lot of unknowns in front of us as it relates to this pandemic. We do have almost 260 employees, however, that have tested positive, and we have a long winter season in front of us. So I've asked Sharon Whitmore to not only give you a good summary of the closeout of the use of the CARES funding dollars, which again, I think, we did an extraordinary job of managing those funds for highest impact, but also what to expect from the federal level as we know it today, with our outside counsel, and certainly we'll ask Patrice to comment as well in terms of her perspective, and then how we plan to manage the reserve fund that we've recommended in the 2021 budget. Two things that I think we don't have plans to necessarily go through in detail today. One will give you some information on one we're still developing. But I do think continued childcare support for our employees that are working in an extraordinary environment where schools are closed and the like, and they're having to care for their children, and also a consideration of a hazardous pay proposal 2.0. Has not been developed yet, but I do think that we need to consider that at perhaps a different level of pay with an expanded number of employees, since we have so many folks that are interacting with the public, and clearly the virus is at a new, new height for the foreseeable future. Finally, I do want to also tip my hat to Rick Barron and the Elections Team. I think coming from where we came from with a full court press, we did an extraordinary job. Specifically, again, I want to call out the, what I call the game of three, Bridgette, Mike, and April, who really were side by side with Rick's team in the planning effort. And I think having detailed plans, following those detailed plans on a daily basis, helped us achieve what we did. Also want to specifically call out Jessica and her outstanding PR effort. She's there every moment of every day, well into the night, and does the best job of anybody I've ever seen of positioning us in an appropriate and positive light. And then all the departments, again, that Rick mentioned, I just want to say again to Matt Callmire, Joe Davis, Glenn Melendez, Ellis's entire team that helped on the infrastructure and emergency management side, Gail and Ladisha, both that offered up and inspired their employees to come, come to the fore. Finance has already been mentioned. HR did a phenomenal job in the recruitment effort. And then just one particular note to call out our county attorney, Patrice Perkins Hooker. It's amazing to me that not only was she a great source of knowledge and counsel, but every time we took a, a action shot, I'll call it, at CT Martin, Patrice was right in the middle of, including yesterday. I saw one on Facebook that was made with the chairman's visitor behind him. Patrice was throwing paper left and right. So, Patrice, I want to thank, thank you personally for your efforts. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'll start through our presentations with Ms. Roach and the Chief Operating Officer overview.
All right, Madam COO, you ready for us?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Happy New Year to you and the rest of the board, and welcome to our new Commissioners. It's very good to see you. And congratulations to our re-elected Commissioners. Today, we will move rather quickly through our update, except we will spend, as the manager stated, significant time going through our incident response update, which has new but troubling information about the pandemic we are currently facing. We're glad to have Dr. Paxton, who will also go through vaccination information that is of significant interest, not just to the board, but also the viewing public. So I'll hand it over to you, Matt, if you can tee up Doug, and then once it's turned back to me, I'll go quickly through reopening and turn it over to the CFO. Matt?
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Just one moment, and I want to go ahead and draw attention to things. First of all, just thanks to our team that did a lot of election support, Donnie Reese and our team, who constantly does an incredible effort to make sure that Elections has a system to operate off of, to have a common operational picture and situational awareness. And a hat, a hat off, I tip my hat to Chief Yates and his team for doing an incredible job on the law enforcement piece yesterday to make sure we had a safe and secure election. So a moment for that, and also a moment just to go ahead and express our sincere condolences, unexpected passing of our Field Operations Director for Animal Services. Tim Portman was an incredible asset. It was, it was, it was an honor to work with him. It's truly a pleasure being with someone who actually cares so much for what they do and gives every ounce of their being to that. It's a loss. It is something that we will work through, but I just wanted to make sure you all knew that someone that was near and dear to what we do and advocates for the safety of the animals in our community unexpectedly left us two weeks ago. With that being said, I'd like to pass this on to Doug Schuster, who'll go ahead and walk us through some of our statistics.
Next slide. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, as we start the new year, I thought it'd be interesting to take a, a, a quick look back at, uh, the month of December. And really, this, these three maps, the United States demonstrate a, a pretty, um, da- uh, pretty spectacular demonstration of the migration of COVID-19 throughout the United States. Uh, we started our kind of historic rise, the United States of, of the second wave in late November, and it really started in the Midwest and upper Midwest, as you see in the top left corner with the darker colors, is the communicability per one hundred thousand. And then when we got to the middle of the month, you can see the spread starting towards the southeast and southwest on the map to the right. And then you can see, uh, and you, and you can look at Georgia in each one of these pictures and kind of see the migration of COVID as it, it's moving across the country. And then you can see that the southwest and, and southeast in the January first picture or map here shows a pretty, uh, significant increase in the southeastern United States, and really even starting to go up into the, uh, northeastern United States. And so I think this demonstrates that COVID, um, will spread and, and the, the principles of social distancing. Uh, people get lax and, and when they're not high numbers, and it will find a way if we don't protect ourselves. Next slide. I want to do the same thing with the state of Georgia. Like I said, the rest of the country was starting to see historic numbers late November, but Georgia was actually in a fairly good place. But you can see kind of the progression of COVID. Um, uh, for reference, United States is twelfth in the world for communicability, and Georgia right now is fourteenth in the U S. So you can see from December first to January first, kind of the spread of COVID throughout Georgia, and the numbers I'm about to show you will bear out what you see in these maps. Next slide. So, uh, now that we've finished December, I put a month-by-month look at cases and deaths in Fulton County. You can see really on the top in the blue, kind of the rise of the second wave from a low in September to our, um, our, our highest month ever in, in December with, uh, thirteen thousand, four hundred and four cases. As we've come to learn, death is a lagging indicator. And so generally, about a month to five weeks after a rise in cases, you will see a rise in deaths, and that's demonstrated here with our November rise. You can see a rise in the deaths in December. And so bear that in mind when we're talking about the, the, the rise of cases and how that relates to deaths in the future. I will say that the good news, if there is any in this slide, is that the death rate is, is obviously lower than the beginning of the pandemic, and we've learned a lot, uh, over a year about the pandemic. And so our treatment, especially in Fulton County, uh, we're going to talk about the death rate in Fulton County compared to the state a little bit later, but, uh, the, the standard of care is, is obviously gotten better, um, through the life of the pandemic here in Fulton County. Next slide. Okay, um, as the county manager, uh, gave you some information upfront, our, this, from December first to, uh, Monday, uh, we have gone up a hundred and forty percent, uh, in cases. Um, as, as you can see, our seven-day average is five hundred and forty cases a day in Fulton County. Um, and, and that is a plus twenty-three percent change over the previous fourteen days, but over the month, we're up a hundred and forty percent. Georgia is even rising at a steeper rate than Fulton County. Uh, they're, uh, thirty percent, uh, over the last fourteen days, and you can see that reflected on the charts to the right. U S cases looks like, uh, for the last, uh, three or four weeks, like they had peaked. But, uh, after the Christmas holiday, we're starting to see a slight rise again. They're up, uh, one percent over the previous fourteen days. And I think if you think of the United States slides, you can kind of see that depicted in those, um, maps we saw of the United States. Next slide. Um, so these are the death comparison charts. Uh, Fulton County, um, is on a seven-day average of one point six deaths. Uh, for the life of the incident, our average is two point five. So we're actually trending under our, our overall average, and compared to the last two weeks, we're twenty-nine percent better than we were. So, um, that, that is encouraging, I believe. Georgia deaths are trending down just a little. They're minus, um, six percent over the previous fourteen days at twenty-six deaths per day. U S deaths, um, are starting, it's very similar to what you saw in the U S cases picture. Uh, it says it's exactly the same as it was fourteen days ago, but really in the last seven, there has been a trend once again upward with two thousand, five hundred and forty-eight cases a day. Next slide. Hospitalizations, which really has become kind of the key metric to track, um, because, uh, individuals that are sick enough to be hospitalized, um, is, is something that, that really is kind of a leading indicator for us, and so we continue to track this. You can see our summertime high at the end of July was six hundred patients. Um, as of, uh, January second, we were at eight ninety-four. Our seven-day average is seven eighty-four, and this is up three hundred percent since the beginning of December first. And, um, and I'm going to turn it over to Matt real quick to kind of talk about something that's happening within Fulton County to address this very critical issue.
Thank you, Doug. One of the things that we do is we share this information with, uh, Grady Healthcare Systems, who does also take that to the other hospital CEOs, as well as to the governor's office, when they meet to talk about surge capacity in the state of Georgia. Uh, it is, it is an honor to make sure that, um, what we put together is being shared with those individuals and help shape the decisions. Based upon some of that data, a decision was made to open the alternate treatment facility at the Georgia World Congress Center Authority. It opened yesterday, January twenty-fifth. It's for all the state of Georgia. It's not just isolated to Metro Atlanta. It's a safety valve for the rest of the state. As Doug said, we are without hospital, uh, I C U beds within the state of Georgia, so it was necessary for these hospitals to go ahead and create additional capacity internally, as well as have this alternate treatment facility as the safety valve. So it opened yesterday with a capacity of twenty-five beds. Difficulty is to find enough nurses as other healthcare providers to go ahead and staff the beds that are there. So the current census as of about thirty minutes ago is twenty-one patients with the one additional patient en route. And tomorrow, they hope to add another five beds to get us to a thirty-bed capacity. And then by Saturday, they, they hope to double that to get us to sixty beds to be able to go ahead and offer relief to the state of Georgia. Doug?
Thank you very much. Next slide. So, uh, the percent positives, as we've also become accustomed to hearing, is a very important metric that we track. Um, since December first, we have risen from six point two percent, uh, to thirteen point five percent. And, uh, within the hospital systems, uh, which is a hundred and twenty percent increase over the time period. The hospital system is currently at fifteen point six and rising. The chart below is actually our hospital percent positives with the overnights. And as you can see, we've been, uh, close to twenty for the last three days or over twenty, uh, percent positive. So, uh, it is, is not a good, good news story there. Uh, Fulton County's trend is trending upward at about a tenth per day, if not two tenths per day, up to thirteen point five percent. And the state's seven-day trend is, uh, up to nineteen point five. I can update this a little. Uh, as of this morning, Fulton County was at thirteen point eight percent, and the state was at nineteen point eight percent. So those numbers can, uh, continue to trend upward. Uh, just a quick note here, um, the percent positives are really important. Uh, you know, the huge amount of cases and the percent positives, really the, the who goal is to be below five percent for contact tracing to be viable. We have a huge contact tracing team, but if we're adding, um, hundreds of new cases per day, it becomes a much more difficult thing to do. So it's a very important metric. Next slide. Okay, um, this is the death projection. I will tell you that we haven't received any new modeling information to update this over the holidays. We expect to receive some new information tomorrow. But as you can see, Fulton County's, uh, percent of the state's total deaths is still continuing to track downward. As of today, we're at seven point five seven percent. And that really means a lot when it comes to kind of us projecting what our death totals are going to be. As you can see, we're at, um, just below the green line, which our best-case scenario line, which, uh, is forecast through April first. Uh, the forecast for best-case scenario is one thousand nineteen deaths. And as of yesterday, we were at seven hundred and forty-two, and the most probable is eleven twenty-four. And like I said, we'll have updated information, uh, next time we talk to you as a group. Next slide. We like to end with a scorecard when we're talking about, uh, our COVID stats here. Um, so, uh, testing demand is on the rise. Matt will talk to you a little bit more about testing, but, uh, it has not gone down after the holidays. It's still at a very high level. Our testing results, um, are less than seventy-two hours, more typically around forty-eight. Um, our cases, uh, are rising at five hundred and forty. If you notice, our red zone started at two hundred and fifty, so that gives you a good, uh, sense of where we are. Our positivity rate is at thirteen point eight, and once again, over ten is in the red. Hospitalization census, and really overnight, we were up to nine hundred and thirty-two. I didn't update you. That is the latest number for the census. And, um, and, and our, our red rate for that started at three fifty. And then Matt had talked to you about hospital bed availability, um, and it is, it is, especially for adult beds, at very low levels. And depending on the hospital, there are no beds available, and they're having to convert rooms, um, and other sections of the hospitals and limit what they're doing with non-COVID patients at this point in Fulton County. Bed availability is still a good location, but it's down from our average of sixty percent at the beginning of December. And our COVID deaths are trending downward just a little at one point six percent. But Matt alluded, or the county, uh, manager alluded to the fact that our morgue census is over ninety. Uh, for the last eight days, we have been, um, uh, using the, uh, one of the two, the first of the two, um, expansion trailers we have set up at the county morgue, uh, refrigerators and tape trailers that we put up at the beginning of the pandemic, and we've actually been using them for the last eight days. Uh, that's all I got. I'm going to turn it over to Matt to talk about testing. Next slide.
Thank you, folks. Updated number as of today, uh, is one million, two hundred, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-five tests are actually have been conducted in Fulton County. Once again, we're leading, uh, the metro area. If you add up the other three health districts, they come out to one point one seven million tests performed, and still looking at about twenty-two point three eight percent, just shy of that twenty-five percent of the total tests actually performed in the state of Georgia comes from our jurisdiction. Test results, uh, they actually are coming back. It's a little bit longer. Uh, we're seeing about seventy-two hours. We had to change lab providers due to, um, new contracts that are in place by the State Department of Public Health. We hope to see some changes in that in the coming days, to be able to go back to some of the other providers that have been a little bit more responsive in the turnaround period, but still within seventy-two hours or less, we're getting results. Significant surge has occurred post-holiday as well as pre-holiday, and it's still going. The demand is very high on all of our sites. Uh, we also can, started the COVID vaccination program at about three weeks ago at our locations, the North Spock, South Spock, and as the county manager said, Mercedes-Benz Stadium started on Monday. Like to go ahead and leave a little bit more of that to discuss with Dr. Paxton in her section, but a lot of work has, has gone through to get us to this point. Next slide. One thing we want to draw everyone's attention to is the increase that we can expect in the colleges when it comes to testing as they return for their spring semester. So it has been stuck at that two hundred and sixteen mark for a little while, but once again, they have, uh, asked the student bodies to go home after the Thanksgiving holiday, and they'll be welcoming them back very shortly. So they'll be initiating their testing plans, uh, in, in the, in the weeks ahead. So we see the, we will expect to see these numbers continue to grow. Next slide. As we get, uh, transitioned, I just want to go ahead and say it's been a true honor to work with the Board of Health, Dr. Paxton, Dr. Holland, Dr. Swanka, Dr. Han and the team. It feels like the Board of Health and Emergency Management has been on either side of a railroad hand pump cart, pumping along a railroad track, uh, the last couple of months. And we finally see the light at the end of this tunnel that we have been in, and vaccination is what's going to get us there. So it's truly an honor to be a part of this, and Dr. Paxton is going to go ahead and give you more information as to what the vaccination program looks like. Dr. Paxton?
Hi, Matt. Thanks, uh, thanks for the intro. Uh, as everyone's alluded to, we have a quite a bit of things that have been going on very recently, so I'm going to try and hit the highlights. And then as ever, um, you know, during the question, uh, question-answer, um, section, feel free to ask me, um, anything you need to, you need to hear about. Um, I think that I'll, um, start off with a few things about, um, it's all sort of related to vaccinations, um, but there is really going to be a strategy pivot, um, both here at Fulton County and, uh, throughout the state, uh, under D P H, um, uh, auspices, in which, uh, now the vaccine is here, that it, that is going to be our primary, um, goal, is to get this out to as many people as quickly as we possibly can. And what that means is, um, uh, the strategy includes really kind of a pivot away from the strong emphasis on the boards of, boards of health doing all of the, uh, as much, all of the testing and, uh, seeking ways that we can move that to other, other groups and the, and the like, so that the Board of Health can concentrate on getting vaccinations out. So related to that, in terms of our, you'll, you might, um, see, hear about this and that. Oh, there are some Spock updates that I can, that I can give you, and that effective Monday, at our Spock Central, which is the, um, the, the walk-up site, we're going to permanently relocate all of the B O H staff from that, from Spock Central to Mercedes-Benz to help with the vaccinations. And on that day, Core is going to begin staffing Spock Central. And so they're going to be continuing with that through, through January. So they'll still be testing there. It's just going to be done mainly by, um, uh, by, by Core. In addition, um, we at the Board of Health are working with D P H, um, to, um, on the, what we call the Spock in a Box, uh, concept, in which, uh, there, the, uh, lab testing company of Mako has this concept in which they will provide not only the test, but all the personnel needed to do this. And, um, and they'll take over basically running this test, the testing service. And the way they're able to do it financially is that they will charge people who, um, have insurance, um, but not charge anybody who doesn't have insurance. And so that's the way that they're, that's the way that their financial model works. And so we have, um, already started the paperwork with D P H to, um, to, to, uh, move at least a couple of our Spocks to that, and so we'll keep you, um, up to date on when that comes through. But it has worked well in some other districts, and so we have, we hope to be able to do the, um, uh, do the same. So if that happens, then, uh, after probably round out at the end of January, we would start that with, uh, Mako. The, um, also, as of this coming Monday, Core is going to be taking over all the sample collection at our North Spock. Um, and so our Board of Health nurses who are, or currently assigned there are going to be, uh, reassigned to vaccinations at that spot, not testing. So those are just a couple of updates on a little bit of the, um, uh, testing strategy changes that we're going to, to do. And then again, before I talk a little bit more about, uh, vaccinations, I'm also going to address, we might have heard that, um, there is a new variant of COVID that's out there, uh, which was, I think, first described in Europe, uh, but it's, as expected, it is spreading. And just yesterday, uh, it was announced that they have discovered that there is one, there was a, an eighteen-year-old here in Georgia, uh, who was found to, um, have that particular variant. The importance of this is, is simply that, um, this variant is about fif- uh, roughly fifty to seventy percent more transmissible, uh, missable than the current variant that we have, uh, floating around. However, it luckily for us, it is not associated with increased deaths or increased more, um, yeah, or morbidity. So it's, it basically is just much easier to get. Uh, and other, and also it appears that the vaccine is, uh, is equally effective against this new variant. So all it does is this reminds us is people still need to wear their mask and do everything they can to, you know, to avoid, um, getting, getting COVID, and those measures will work against this, um, uh, this, this new variant. against this, this, this new variant. So now I can switch more over to talking about vaccines. So can I have the next slide? All right. So as some of you may be aware, because you saw the, it in the news and on the, the governor's press conference, last Wednesday, December 30th, the governor had a press conference to announce that now all adults 65 and over are going to become part of Tier 1A, which is good. These are, this is a very high-risk population. However, public health was not notified about this until a couple of hours before the, the announcement was made. So we have ever since been rapidly, and I, I think we'll be successfully retooling to that. So let me explain a little bit about how that has affected what we are currently doing. As you can see, at the, at the, the current, we are currently only vaccinating people who are in Phase 1A, and now we're calling it sort of Phase 1A Prime, which is healthcare personnel and long-term care facility staff and residents. And now that we know that we are going to, as of next Monday, have to add in first responders and adults 65 and over, we are using this week to go full pedal to the metal to try and get as many of the Phase 1A Prime people vaccinated before the floodgates open on Monday, although I will, as an aside, tell you, they're already opening and, you know, with people trying to, to get vaccinated at the moment. So that is the, that's been a huge change for us and is affecting a lot of our plans. And so we are actually having to make a lot of plans about how we're going to cater to the large onslaught of people who are 65 and over, many of whom will have, you know, mobility issues and all that. So we cannot necessarily send them to some of our vaccination sites that require long walking or going up and downstairs. So we are looking into, we will be opening up a vaccination site in the, in the new, in the, what was called the Charlie Brown, I guess, airport facility, whatever that was. We'll be opening up a vaccination site there, particularly because we know we need that for people who are above 65 or who might have mobility issues. The, I know that in the short time, I'm going to be looking upon this as the good old days because after we progress through Phase 1, we are then going to be moving into Phase 1B, is which is when you have the critical people who are working, basically essential employees, including schools, and the, and so we're going to have, we're, we're making plans already for how we're going to start dealing with that. And of course, I'll keep you up to date as we move through these phases. But at the moment, we are strictly concentrating on Phase 1A. Now, all of the commissioners should have received yesterday an email from me that was, crafted thankfully, thankfully, by my communications staff, basically trying to enlist your help to answer questions from your constituents, because we are well aware that people want information, because we're getting over 1,500 inquiries every single day. I thought I was getting all of them myself, but yeah, we're getting a lot of them every day. And so we sent out this email to you so that you can directly provide that information to your constituents, and we hope that that will, that that will help. One thing that I think, a couple of things I really want to stress, because we're already starting to see problems with people like, for example, just showing up, saying, I saw the governor said that I can get a, I can get a vaccination, so I'm here, that, and, and also I have to, I hate to say this, but there's been a lot of people who have been gaming a particular glitch to the system that we're, we're working to close. So we, we're realizing this is turning out to be a big, big problem. So there are some things I just want to emphasize, that we are strictly appointment-only. So anyone who shows up without an appointment will have to be turned, turned away. Over 65s can start scheduling, can start scheduling next week, but they, they should not be coming in now because we are working pedal to the metal to finish vaccinating the healthcare personnel and the, and the like. So they should know that they will also be turned away this week because they're, they start next week. And that people will need to bring IDs to the, and in the case of healthcare workers, a proof of licensure so that we can make sure that we are indeed giving these to people who are in the, in the, in the correct year. I would also ask, you know, your, the commissioners to please be cognizant, a lot of people are going to ask you, because they're asking us, they're going to ask you for some form of special treatment, such as can you facilitate, you know, my 80-year-old mother who's, you know, deathly ill and all that from, you know, to, you know, to get an appointment? And as much as we want to, we would love to be able to do that, we simply cannot. So we really have to have, we have limited amounts of vaccine. We have to be fair. There are many people who are, don't have an N, who don't have, you know, don't, don't know somebody in charge or whatever. And so we're having to remind, remind, ask you to please not offer to facilitate any appointments when, when you're asked, because we cannot do that. And so I just wanted you to be aware of that, because I don't want to put you in a bad position, and we try not to be put in that position as well. Let's see, do we have another slide up here? Okay, this is just going on to show what the other phases are going to be as we progress through this. And I want to stress again that all of this is on our website, so if you want to go back and take a look at it, any point, any time of the day or night, you can. So after we get through the essential workers and the schools and adults who are six, who are under 65, but who have significant morbid, comorbidities that put them at higher risk for COVID, we will then be moving into Phase 2, which is going to include people who are living mainly in congregate settings, such as homeless shelters, jails, and other congregate settings. And then, then we'll open up to, into general adults between the ages of 41 and 64. And then after that, we then move into the subsequent phases, three and, three and four, in which, you know, we, we're trying, we'll be reaching out to more, more workers, we'll be expanding down to younger, even younger adults. And then Phase 4, it's basically, you can kind of look at this as the everyone else, you know, model. We're going to try to get everyone. Now, based on, you know, that projected vaccine availability, it's going to take a while to get through all of these phases. We're really looking at, you know, it'll be, it'll be good if we can get, you know, all of this, through all this by next summer. We get vaccine in batches. As I mentioned in the email I sent to you all yesterday, national vaccine stores are limited, and so we are not in a position to, we couldn't, we couldn't vaccinate all 1.3 million people in, in Fulton next week because we don't have enough vaccine among all of us. So I just want, I'm always advising people to just be patient. As soon, as we get the vaccine, the vaccines, we open up appointments, you know, to, so the people can come get them. And I also need to stress that the Board of Health is far from being the only vaccine provider in, in the, in the system. Many, the larger hospitals and some practices, they had, they receive their, they receive a separate allocation, so they don't even go, they don't go through us. CVS and Walgreens and some of the other pharmacies, there are more and more are being brought on. They will, they are and will be receiving separate allocations. And so as we go through, we will be finding there will be more and more places where people can get, get vaccinated. So another thing I mentioned in the email yesterday is that we are very much encouraging people to contact their own healthcare providers, because it might well be that their healthcare provider might, particularly in the larger groups, might be a vaccine provider. And so we'll then be in a position to be able to vaccinate their patients and others in the, in the, in the, in the communities. So just want to let you know, Board of Health is not the only game in town, but we are certainly, I would, I would consider ourselves, so we're also, we're always sort of the provider of last resort, too. So people who cannot be accounted, catered for through other means, such as a hospital, their own provider, or whatever, you know, they will, we will end up taking care of them. So that's sort of what, where we, you know, where we are with this. And I don't know, is there another slide here? Okay. So here, here's what we're doing right now. As I mentioned, we are going full bore with this. We are planning to have pretty considerable vaccination capability. We are aiming to be able to see about 2,000 people per day or roughly 12,000 per week. All right? So the things that determine what our capacity is, is number one, vaccine availability. Then do we have the staff and the logistics to able to, to, to deliver that? And so our current capacity, right now, we're, you know, we're, we're going from zero to 60 as fast as we can. And so we're trying to get up to, over the next three weeks, to get to that at least 1,000 a day as soon as we possibly can. This particular, this weekend, we are doing, you know, as I said, a, a big push to do, to finish getting the healthcare workers and others, like paramedics, EMTs, vaccinated. And so at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium and others, we're going to, so we're aiming to do at least 1,000 a day this weekend and then to keep building on that. We are, our aim is to achieve this maximum capacity by this 25th of January, because that's when we're going to start seeing the, having to start give second doses to people who've already gotten their first. So that's our goal, is to be up to maximum capacity by the end of January. So our basic planning efforts, we, we're, we're in constant communication, and we have standing meetings, minimum of three times a week and often more. So, because we have to act fast and be ready also to change and to pivot as things happen, such as, for example, the addition of 65 and plus, you know, a week ago. So we just, we just, we need to be as nimble as we can so we can react to these things as they happen. So what we've been doing is we, DPH is working on a very sophisticated scheduling system that would be, all of the districts will be able to use. And we at Fulton have volunteered to be one of the test sites for it when they roll it out. However, that's likely not going to be until somewhere around the, you know, the late to mid, mid to late January. Okay? So until then, we needed to create our own temporary registration system, and our IT group has been working very diligently on that. There's still some bugs in it that we are, are working out, but they, I think they've done a very, they've done a heroic job on, on working on, on that so that we can start processing people. So we have to, it's like, as some of you are aware, that these, these vaccines have are, have got pretty stringent requirements in terms of being kept frozen. Like, for example, the Pfizer vaccine has to be kept at minus 70 degrees centigrade, and most people don't, most places don't have freezers of that capability. So we have to carefully consider which locations we can use Pfizer at and which we can use the other ones, the other one at. We have to, again, because we're ramping up so quickly, and also, and I have to admit, I have to say, you know, the federal, the federal vaccine response was severely lacking in terms of, there was no central plan made. Ideally, a central plan would have been developed months ago and money sent to the states to be able to implement that plan, because the most difficult part of vaccine, you know, getting it out to people, of course, it's, it's difficult to actually develop the vaccine, and luckily that was done and that was done successfully. But actually, the most difficult part, it tends to be what we call the last mile. It's like getting it from, to, into actually getting it into people's, people's arms. And money was not really allocated to that until relatively recently, and so far in very paltry amounts. So we are, have got a relatively small amount of money for that, which we will be using to hire temporary staff. But in the meantime, we have leveraged our considerable connections to local medical schools and pharmacy schools, EMT and paramedics, and our wonderful Core Medical Research, Medical Reserves Corps. And we have got people from these groups who are coming in this weekend to help us with this, you know, this immediate surge to get the healthcare workers vaccinated. And many of them are, have, will continue to volunteer to help out as they can, and I'm happy that there are a lot of people who are, who are offering to do that. But we do need our own paid staff, because volunteers, you know, they don't, they won't work, they can't work entire shifts or over many days and all that. So we need to, to actually have our, have our own paid temporary staff for this. And so we'll be using some of the money that we got from DPH. Fulton County is, as ever, is being very helpful in helping us work through this, and so we will do that. But I just want to say that's one thing that we, that's a big, staffing is a big, is a big issue for us. And so again, and that include, when I talk about staffing, that also includes the ancillary support systems that we need, like people to, you know, they're not necessarily giving the vaccines, but they're helping move people through the, through the vaccination center. We also, you know, helping people with parking. Matt and his team have done a fabulous job of identifying suitable places for us to conduct these vaccine, vaccine campaigns and making sure that we have the, all the material that are needed. And they've been able to do this, ramp things up extremely quickly. Again, as I mentioned, we're going to be having to do that again at another place, Charlie Brown, sort of the aviation location, and they've assured me that they can do that in a, in a matter of days, which I think is pretty stupendous, and so hats off to them. I'm probably going to have to stop talking now, because I could just go on and on and on, and I think it's probably more helpful that when we get to the question and answer section, that you can just ask me questions. So is there another slide there? Oh, yeah. This is just simply, it's just a summary kind of of what I have already sent you in the email. So it just, if you could just use the email that I sent you yesterday, has all the information that you can share with your constituents. Next slide. So I guess we're at the questions section whenever.
And thank you, Dr. Paxton, Madam CEO.
Mr. Chairman, there were questions for Dr. Paxton.
Yes, sir. Bruce, tomorrow, you have the floor.
Thank you. Dr. Paxton, thank you for that information. I, just a couple of quick comments on, on the results slide that Matt provided to us about the testing results in 48 hours. My last test at Central, it took five days to get the results, so maybe that had to do with holidays, so I hope we're getting them, getting them faster these days. Second point, I'll just say publicly that, you know, I have a family member who's a teacher who has to go live in her public school system, which is not in Fulton County. It's in Cobb, and I, I really hate that teachers aren't higher up in, in those phases when they have to go to work live. We've had Cobb County teachers die from COVID, and I certainly don't want that to happen to, to my family member. But, but, but my real point of getting, getting recognized for questions, Dr. Paxton, is I really appreciated your comments about people gaming the system. I've been getting lots of calls and emails from people complaining that people are jumping in line. I heard from a friend yesterday that, that some neighbors are, have, have appointments today to get the vaccine, and they don't have a thing to do with the healthcare system. But I, my response to some of these people is, I have a Facebook friend who posted this yesterday. He's a lawyer, by the way, doesn't have a thing to do with healthcare. "My wife and I got COVID-19 vaccine shots today at Mercedes-Benz Stadium. We were shuffled to the main floor through the dressing room areas to the Delta Club. Fulton County Health Department did a very good job keeping you separated and moving people through the process. You had to make an appointment online." And then someone, someone says, says, "I thought it was only for frontline medical personnel." He responds, "I think 65 and older. I was prepared to tell them I had a serious condition, but they never asked. I think we were just lucky." Person then asked, "How and where did you sign up for an appointment?" And he, and he said, he cites, he cites the Fulton County Health Department login, I guess, for healthcare folks. So, you know, I'm certainly in that age category, and people have asked me about, about me getting vaccinated. I said, "I'm not interested in jumping the line, but I sure am interested in other people not jumping the line."
Yeah.
And I guess you're not asking folks who sign up on the healthcare, or signed up on the healthcare site. Whether they have anything to do with the healthcare.
Yeah, well, what we were, what we found out and we're we're we, this really came to a head yesterday. Uh is that we, it's on our healthcare, on the site. It is supposed to be that you 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 have to put in a license number, okay? And then only people who've got a license number can go through. What we just kind of discovered, I don't want to go into too much right now because I don't want people to understand. How that glitch happened and maybe even children try to exploit it to a certain extent. But we we found that some, there was a glitch at one point when uh they could just put in not applicable. Or something else or their telephone number and they were still getting through. Um, so we are closing that gap and in addition, but we still have, again, uh I I at uh the IT person. Our IT head was talking to me about this 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 morning. Is on our current list, we 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 have an indication that there are prob- there are a lot of people who who have currently gotten through on that. So we're going to actually email them and say, you know, there's discrepancy with this and please send us proof. And in addition, we are uh instituting today at Mercedes Benz. Um, we are going to have somebody stationed at the entrance. Uh so that people don't walk all the way in and be told this, but you know, they're going to, we're going to be reminding people that. No, we're not vaccinating over sixty fives yet, so you know, if you're here for that, no. Um, and the other thing is uh have them show, for the healthcare workers, to have them show their license. At the um at the um at the gate. Uh but you know, what this has just shown me, it's made me even more cynical than I thought I was before. Is that no matter what system you have, someone's gonna try to game it. So what we're gonna have to do is we have to try to think ahead and try to figure out how we can um how we can stop that. Cause it's just not fair and all the people who play by the rules and in and do that, they're being harmed by those who are jumping ahead. So we are doing our best to uh, you know, to work on this. And I fully acknowledge, I've been talking to my team about this a lot. It's to a certain sense, only gonna get worse for us because as we move into these other phases. In which the definition uh might be a little more vague. For example, it's easy to know if someone's over sixty five, they show you a driver's license, your birthday, you're done. But you know, having to figure out if you're, are you in an essential, you know, in a central job? How are you gonna prove that to us if you are under the age of sixty five? But have um, you know, a significant medical mal- bad building. Are we going to have to ask people to have bring a doctor's note? That's, you know, very cumbersome, so this isn't easy. And all of us um across the district, all of the state, we're all working on it, but we're we're, we are aware that it is an issue. And so I'm just trying to ask everyone's help um to, you know, that we, we're trying to keep the gaming down. And we're also trying to take, uh we're trying to keep down the people trying to use connections. To to get the this um, you know, to to get access, earlier access to to the vaccine.
Well, thank you, enough enough said on that, I appreciate that response, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mark, Commissioner Hall, Vice Chair Hall.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, starting with a notice that your presentation. Says, um. Let's see if there's a page number, no page number, but the title on the page says Georgia Priority Population Allocation. And I noticed that in phase two, you have here um individuals in homeless shelters. And individuals in congregate settings. Uh um, an example, homeless shelters, dormitories and group homes. But I didn't see anywhere in your presentation um about addressing the homeless population who live on the streets. How, how do we access them? How will you um get to them as far as administering that the vaccine? Um because that population is probably the um, the population that would infect everyone else. Because there's, they're literally on the streets, they're literally roaming around. And I don't see very many of them with mask. So is there a plan to address that population as well?
There will be a plan, uh but as you can see, we're still, there are so many populations that we're working, that we're working towards. That I can't give you any details yet on that, on what that plan will be. But yes, we absolutely will have to uh come up with an idea of how to do that. Maybe you'll be working through uh pla- places such as Wellstar, which already has a very uh well organized um. Uh um, you know, a system of like mobile uh mobile vans in which they go out to uh these homeless encampments. But yeah, so you're, you, we totally understand what you're saying, what you're talking about, and we do realize that they need to be addressed. Uh, we are just, we're working on so many things right now. Uh that we haven't been able to get into everything, like how are we going to get to restaurant workers? Or how are we going to do this, that and the other? We will, but you know, we have to do this and and you know, we have to, we'll be doing it over time.
Okay, cause I'm speaking of a population that doesn't have transportation, doesn't have a home, doesn't have a check. A restaurant worker would have uh all of that. Um, so they would probably be easier to get to than someone that's homeless on the streets. And um, I wanna recommend that you work with places like Mercy Care, um who actually do.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I meant to say Mercy Care, I said Wellstar, I meant to say Mercy Care, you're right.
Okay, all right, yes, and then um, address the the low income individuals and families. Who don't have access to the transportation to get to the um vaccination, to the location where they can actually get that vaccination. Um, my next question is, um, do you have a plan for educating the public about the vaccine? I do wanna thank you for the email that you sent to all of us commissioners. Um, giving us an outline of what we can actually say to our constituents. Because as you know, we have uh at literally talked across email because I'm getting those emails in my office. And I wanna thank you and your team for being so responsive. But uh and you, and I also want to address your statement earlier about um commissioners not making any promises to constituents. That we will do anything special to move them up um in line to get that vaccine. And I wanna say this to you, that my team have not and will not tell constituents that they will receive special treatment. So if anyone says that, that um to you or your team, please let me know. And if I need, if you need to contact me, please do so. But as I stated to you in the email the other day, my team and I will continue to respond with the information that you provided to us. Um, to ease that burden on you and your staff. Um, so are you looking at an education plan for the public?
Yes, uh, we have already started having town hall meetings. We had uh uh one that was famously Zoom bombed uh about over a week ago. But we're, we're uh working on a schedule of town hall meetings uh aimed at various groups. Uh, we have um, luckily, we have, we have great access to like, for example, um Latinx physicians, uh other Hispanic uh uh groups. So we can even have some town halls in um in Spanish, you know, Spanish only. Uh, so we're working on on setting up a series of those. There is a social media campaign um that uh the group is working on, which is going to include. Um, uh, basically, the the standard things that you have in social media campaigns. Um, ads, billboard ads, a lot of stuff on uh Facebook, our Instagram accounts and the and the and the like. Um, we have um handouts and documents that we're working on so that we can uh, you know, get those out, you know, to very, at various places. To explain about the uh vaccine. And I'm probably giving short shrift to this, but I mean, uh Sheena, our our, Sheena Haynes, our communications person. Is the one who's really in charge of this and I'm sure she's gonna come to me later and say, oh, why didn't you mention this? Why didn't you mention that? But we do have um a communications plan about uh the vaccine and trying to ex- um to address. The very real problem of vaccine hesitancy, uh particularly among certain uh groups that have historically um uh been disadvantaged. Um, and so we are working um a lot on that. I think that the the couple of town halls we've had have been actually pretty very, have been pretty good. And I think that they've been helpful and people have come back to us later and said, yeah, we think that uh this this has helped. And yeah, I'm gonna take the vaccine now and I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty good. Um, so yes, we have a lot going on. Um, and uh if you want any, if you want, you know, more specific details, I can always put you in touch with with Sheena. Who will always, you know, correct me and or fill in the blanks that I might have left.
Yes, and I wanna say that Sheena is one of uh the best on your team. She handles the communication so well and she's very good in the community. She literally has come out and spoken in the past, so I just wanna thank you for her. And will you have a list of locations where the vaccination can be accessed by the constituents?
Well, basically, we're only, we're doing them at ours, at the standing sites. When they, when people make the um, when they make their appointments, obviously, then they'll have a, they'll have, they'll be able to choose at that point. Which of the um, at the sites that they wanna go to, like for example, people north would wanna go to the north side and others would go to Mercedes Benz, which is central. Others at the aviation center when we open that up, so um, that's when they will be able to choose which of the sites they're going to go to.
So is it only gonna be those three sites or will you be adding any additional locations? Will the health centers actually at some point be able to administer this vaccine?
Uh, yes, to all that, uh, we will be able to do that, you know, again, please understand, we are working as fast as we can. So we don't really have, we don't, I don't have the definitive list yet. And so where, that's why we're referring people, uh, you know, to our website to give, you know, to give as much information as we can about that. Uh, but because this is all appointment only, uh, that's, uh, you know, it 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 almost. We, we actually kind of got a, got a little bit of a bit of um, we've had in the past in that when we sort of announced that, oh, we're doing vaccinations at this, at this particular place. We started getting people showing up just because they thought they they could. Um, so um, in a way, I think it's actually nicer, better to have it just linked to the, you know, to when they make their appointment. Then they can choose where they're going to want to, want to go.
Okay, yeah, I think a lot of people felt like since te- since testing was free, that they could walk up and do the same thing with vaccination. So that's something that needs to be part of the, the communication out to everyone. Um, mentioned the Board of Health website and I can tell you personally and from um, from trying to access it myself. To constituents and even my own, my own District fourteen, trying to access it, that your website is having some issues. And so I, I know i- if you have access to your IT person right now, if you can answer this question. Of um, are you looking at your current bandwidth and are there, is it having issues? Because there's so many people trying to access it right now?
Hmm, uh, I'm alone in my office, so I can't, I can't answer that uh, that question, but I will pass it on.
Okay.
Uh, to them.
Okay.
Uh, and of course, anybody who doesn't have access, internet access, um, they should, they can just call the call center. So we wanna ma- make it so that it is still accessible to people who might not be internet savvy or might not have that internet access.
Well, is the call center the place where you said you're receiving these additional fifteen hundred calls?
It's a, it's among everyone, it's like emails to me, it's emails to staff, it's to calls, um, you know, uh, and um, it just text communications. Yeah, we're, we're overloaded, I'm not, I'm not gonna over, I'm not going to, uh, you know, I can't sugarcoat that. We are working right now on uh increasing our call center capacity by uh increasing back the number of lines. Increasing the number of um, of um, of people to answer it. And so it'll probably, you know, it'll take us a couple of days and so we're, you know, but we're, we're working on trying to improve our, improve that capacity.
Well, based on what you just said about um, the Board of Health trying to handle the, the uh, the fluctuation and increase. In uh constituents contacting you and not having the capacity to respond, but trying to. Um, I I wanna defer to the the fact that we're talking about allocating to, well, no, three point five million dollars. To allow uh the transfer of our Fulton County employees to be state employees. And that's extra money to make that happen. Instead of doing that, it seems that at this point, due to COVID nineteen, we would need to take that three point five million dollars. And actually help you gain the capacity to be able to handle what is happening right now. And um, so I'll just sit, leave that out there. Um, and if you can, just uh get someone to address the website because constituents are saying they're getting kicked out. I tried it and got kicked out and so did my team. Thank you so much, Dr. Paxton. You are really working hard but doing a good job as as well as you can, I appreciate it. And the constituents do too.
All right, I think I see Commissioner Abdul-Rahman's hand.
Yes, Chairman, thank you, uh, Dr. Paxton, thank you um for addressing some of the things that I wanted to ask you about. I did have some constituents that were trying to reach by phone. So I appreciate you uh addressing that because I actually did it myself. They were actually sitting on the phone and I was sitting on the phone and after being on the phone for quite a wait, they would get booted out. And so thank you for addressing and being candid about that, that those are some issues that you're already aware of. The only thing that I did want to just say to you, because I have so many healthcare workers in my family. Anytime you're trying to do something, you're always gonna have a level or segment of society that's gonna try to game the system regardless of what you try to do. Um, I would just ask that we remain uh diligent. And making sure that none of our uh healthcare workers are those that should be uh getting vaccinated now. Have to go through any unnecessary uh tribulation trying to get the vaccine. Uh, sometimes you, you can't help when you have a, almost the good, have to suffer with the bad type thing. Because um, I appreciate you catching the glitch and working on it. But I just wouldn't, I'm just a little cautious that I don't want, and having so many healthcare members in my family. I would not want one person who is a healthcare frontline that is putting their lives on the line daily. Trying to uh attack this COVID and they have to go through an extra layer or a little bit more unnecessarily. Because uh, some of us are not respectful of who should be vaccinated. So I'm just asking as a caution that when you do finalize and if you are finalizing. That we do not make it harder for those that it's intended for now. Because those that are not intended to get it are gaming the system. So that's pretty much, I just wanted to to bring that to your attention. And thank you again for addressing a couple of the things that I was gonna ask you. And uh, this is a, this is unprecedented times. And I know that we have a large amount of individuals that are trying to access that website, that are trying to get on that call center. And so anything that you can do, especially with the call center, um, anything that you can do to kind of help that, you know, streamline it a little better. You know, people not getting kicked out after waiting, you know, thirty or forty five minutes, almost an hour to speak to someone, I really would appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and and welcome to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, anyone else at this time? Anyone else?
Hey, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ellis?
I have some stuff. Um, thank you, um, just a few things and I wanted to go, I've got some stuff on the vaccines, but I wanna go back to uh. Um, you made some remarks at at the beginning about. Changes in the way that we were gonna do testing. Um, and I wanna understand that again, um, cause I think I heard you understand, say that we're basically going to be shifting. Our testing model and administration, did I hear that correctly?
Yes. To a certain extent, yes.
Okay, um, well, I guess I'll I'll preface my questions by saying that, you know, this. Our testing model has been, you know, arguably very strong and one of the strongest, you know, certainly in the state. And have been held out as a little bit of a model. So I'm a little bit concerned that we're suddenly now going to be shifting to a model which may not prove to be as successful as what we have been doing. And we may be doing that at the time where we're also struggling to get our footing with vaccines and have a two-headed monster where we're doing. Potentially doing both not so well. Uh, so I'm, I I, I wanna understand specifically how we're transitioning, why we're doing it. Is it a staffing issue, is a, is a, is it a cost issue? And what's the potential impact and downside to our citizens with?
Okay, uh, well, uh, most likely, I don't think the citizens will notice anything at all. Uh, what's being proposed and what we're hoping. Uh, what's being proposed and what we're looking forward to is that, for example, as I mentioned, we're gonna be taking Board of Health staff, uh, from our current walk up the two, the sixty, two sixty-five Boulevard station and moving them over to do vaccinations. However, Core is going to come in and take over the testing operations there. So you're not, there's, there's gonna be no change in terms of what the, what the clients see because they don't care whether it's Board of Health or whether it's Core that's there, uh, doing their tests. So there's, there's still, there's not gonna be any change, um, in, in that, in that way. And as I mentioned before, what, what Board of Health is working with Mako, which is, um, uh, a laboratory that's already doing many of, has been doing many of the, um, testing, DPH testing. They have got this new model in which, as I said, they have now got this Spock in a box. And so not only are they doing the testing, they're actually doing the specimen collection. And so we would be working with them to basically give over to them that the, this, the, the specimen collection in addition to their running the tests. So once again, clients won't see any difference, but it does free up our personnel for us to move them into, into, uh, working on vaccinations. So that's, you know, in a nutshell, that's the way that that would, that that would work.
So is the driver here more decision to go this way being driven more from a staffing perspective? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, it's, it's a couple of things. We would, in terms of sta- staffing, it's absolutely. Uh, in or, it's better for us to, you know, to take our people and put them into vacci- vaccinations. Uh, but also, uh, we had been starting to look into this even earlier because of the, um, you know, uh, when, when we were informed by the governor, when DPH was informed by the governor a couple of months ago, I think I mentioned this, that there was gonna be no further CARES funding, uh, that was gonna be allocated to public health. Uh, at the DPH level, we started looking into, well, how can we start, uh, you know, how can we start saving money? And that's when I talked to you about, you know, the strategy of using rapid tests under circum- circumstances that are, that are cheaper. Um, then, um, then this, that, and also this is the, another thing that came, that started then of, of an, of a way for us to continue to be doing testing, but at no cost to the public health system. So that was already in the works. Um, and, and now we're, you know, taking, I mean, it's definitely time to pull the trigger on that. And so that we can, so we'd both be saving money, um, DP, uh, public health be saving money. And then we can also use the personnel for the vaccination effort.
So this, okay, right. Um, it sounds like cost is being an overweighting consideration here. So the people that are coming in to test, they're, you also said that, I guess, for this group, this group, they're gonna be basically potentially billing insurance on for some folks?
Yes, the way that their model works is that they would be asking for insurance and information. I mean, there'd be no cost to, there'd be no copays, no copays for the, for the client. So, but Mako can make this work is if they, if they can then, they can, but they can bill the, uh, the insurance company. If somebody doesn't have insurance, uh, they still get a test. I mean, so they don't get, you know, it, this is, uh, no one will be denied a test because they don't have insurance. They just come, they just get their test. If they have insurance, then Mako can bill their insurance for the, for the vex, uh, for the, uh, for the test.
Well, I, I'll just go on record to say, I mean, I do think this is a change. I do think, you know, you've gone from a sort of no excuses model to one where you're gonna be exchanging insurance information and so forth. Um, you know, other states, I guess, probably have something similar where they're doing it. Uh, in certain locations, I don't think it's worked as well. Uh, so I do think it's something for us to watch. Um, and if it proves not to be effective, um, you know, and this is an issue of cost, I'd, I'd, I, I, I'd, I'd, I think we need to reconsider and, and be, uh, be as smart as we can about, you know, kind of maintaining, certainly maintaining the level of, of interest in folks going out and getting testing. Um, and the effectiveness of the model that we have had.
Certainly understood. Actually though, we are not the people, we are not the first to, to model this here in Georgia. I think it was Clayton County, uh, maybe another county. They, they did it first and it worked well for them. And, um, they love it. So anyway, so we're actually not even pioneering this in Georgia. Uh, some of the other he- health districts are doing it. But of course, if it turns out not to work, then we are prepared to, uh, to pivot back to what we had before.
Yeah, and I recognize we're not pioneering it, but my point being is that we, we, we've had what arguably is a very, very successful model and we're changing that model. Uh, anytime you make a change, particularly sort of midstream and something, I do think that there are. Uh, so I'm just putting that out there as a, as a point of concern. Um, and that's great that it's working for Clayton County, but we've got something that's working well for Fulton County right now. And, um, you know, and that, you know, made a comment that, uh, you need, that, uh, Fulton County is helping you out a good bit, but I just remind you that you are Fulton County, so we're all, we're all one in this.
Thank you, cause I think some of, I, that, that doesn't often get, get, you know, sort of get stated. We consider ourselves to be part of Fulton County and we are only dealing, you know, we are working to, for Fulton County constituents. I think that that has some down. Sometimes we've been accused of having some other designs, but thank you for acknowledging that.
And, um, and with that too, I, I, this, and I offer this in the spirit, when we started up and I realize you weren't here when we started up the testing effort, but, uh, as I listened to some of the remarks when we start about the startup of the vaccine piece. Um, and there were a lot of, uh, uh, parallels, I think, that, you know, we can sort of reflect upon about when we got started. And one of those relates to communication. Um, and we got overloaded with, with calls and flooded with it, you know, within our call center. We weren't staffed enough, et cetera. Um, and, you know, I, 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 I think it's good that we're, got some of this stuff out there. But whatever is on the Board of Health site related to vaccines needs to be on the Fulton County government site. We don't need to have lags with this. They need to be done simultaneously. Uh, I would venture to say that probably, you know, equal if not more people are gonna go to the Fulton County government site versus the Board of Health site. Um, and information needs to be there in both places and they need to link and they need to work. Um, and, you know, we need to focus on over-communication. Um, the, the call volume, I mean, I, I know we had sort of disagreements about, um, the way that should be run or whatever with, for the Board of Health and some of the stuff that, uh, maybe admin- our administration had proposed related to call centers. But I think, you know, particularly right now with the group that has, knows that they, knows that they have availability for it, um, probably is the population that is most likely to pick up the phone and call. Uh, this age sixty, age sixty-five group versus, you know, I realize several of them will use other mechanisms and, you know, website and electronic means. Uh, but as probably a general, general statement, you know, for the percentage of population that still wants to use the phone, this is a heavy user group with that. And it's coming at a time where we're potentially being flooded, which is not necessarily a good combination. So I, I, I don't know what, you know, what is available in terms to lend support to that effort from, uh, other employees within county government, et cetera. But I do think that that, that piece of the communication chain needs to be, um, kind of leaned into as much as possible, you know, in the near term until we get, um, you know, some of the, the interest and the inquiries to sort of die down. Um, so those two pieces, sort of having the same information on both sites and, you know, doing something to support this from a call standpoint, even if it's sort of helping to give scripts to people that are gonna call in to, uh, county government as well, um, to help sort of message, message this with, uh, this over, over sixty-five population.
On the, uh, I had some questions related to numbers, uh, on the vaccine piece. How many, uh, vaccines have we received to date?
See, I don't actually have that number right in front of me. Uh, I think, I know that we were today, we were supposed to get us an additional seven thousand to help us with this weekend, um, weekend surge. What I do have in front of me is, uh, how many people have been vaccinated from various, uh, groups? Did you want to hear that? Uh, Board of Health and Spock operation staff, uh, roughly four hundred and fifty. EMTs and paramedics, about six hundred. Unaffiliated doctors, nurses, um, you know, healthcare worker staff, one thousand two hundred and fifty. So far, roughly, these are rough numbers.
What were, and then what were our initial, um, volumes that we were, that we received in terms of vaccinations?
We get them in batches, so, you know, I can't really, I mean, like, this is again off the top of my head. I think, I think our initial order was like two thousand seven hundred doses from Pfizer. And then I think we had a do, I think for Moderna, I think we haven't had an order in for somewhere around five thousand. Then we put in, uh, through DPH was gonna supply us with this additional seven thousand or so that we're supposed to be getting today. I mean, these are again rough, rough numbers, um, that, um,
Seven thousand doses probably already?
I don't know, know if they've even arrived yet today, but, you know, it was supposed to be coming in.
No, the original order, I mean, is a seventh year.
Again, we got, we, I know we got all the Pfizer. Um, um, so that twenty-seven hundred, I know we got and we've been putting that out. Uh, the Moderna, again, I thought that the order was for five thousand, but again, I don't believe we got all those in yet. They come in in batches. We put in a, we put in an order and then we, you know, we, they, they send it, they send it out to us in batches.
Okay, um, you know, and I, and I realize we're at the front end of this, but, um, you know, one thing that, you know, we've been able to get really, we've gotten to the point where we're getting really good data on testing and where it's coming from and who is doing it. Um, yeah, I, I, my ask, and this is an ask for, you know, I guess sort of the collective team is, in, in understanding kind of can it be done and if not, what are the barriers? I think our citizens are gonna want to see this. I think, uh, there needs to be a lot of transparency in the stuff and people are gonna want to see numbers of, of vaccines administered versus received, et cetera. But these charts that we have been provided that sort of show who's doing testing and where it's come from and sort of, uh, reporting around that, uh, I guess this sort of my ask for, you know, both Board of Health and our EMA folks to see if there's a way for us to assemble something similar to, um, vaccinations being done throughout the county by multiple providers, uh, and what those numbers look like, uh, and seeing sort of movement on that. Uh, you know, over a period of time. Uh, so that's, you know, I recognize that that's not gonna be something that's probably gonna be readily available near term. But I, I do think that that's something that, um, quickly we need to try to be able to determine whether we can hit that level of, uh, information and reporting sharing around. So that's a, that's a sort of a challenge for the collective, uh, group that's been providing us with COVID reporting information. I think this is gonna be critical to see. The, uh, Commissioner Morris had alluded to, uh, to educators. And I, I, I share the same, um, the shame sentiment with that, that, uh, you know, that it would have liked to just seen this group be in the early batch. But one of the things that I also understand, and maybe I heard this wrong, but, uh, it was my understanding that, uh, something that Cobb County Board of Health did is they work with the school systems and they did address educators, uh, over the age of sixty-five. And they have administered vaccines or they did, uh, mass administration of vaccines for that subgroup. Um, if that, whether it's accurate or not, I do think that that's something that would be worthy for us to explore with, uh, particularly the school systems that are, are going to be back face to face. I don't know whether that's both school systems, I mean, certainly Fulton County schools. I can't remember whether APS is, um, intending to go face to face or remain virtual. Um, so that's, you know, I think that that's something that's worthy for us to reach out and talk to them. It certainly meets, meets the sixty-five and over category. It would be a large group of people, maybe that would allow you to do something efficiently, um, and address, you know, kind of a, a particular, um, you know, particular population, uh, which could have potentially a benefit for, uh, for multiple constituents. So, uh, I would throw that out there for consideration as well. The, there are other providers certainly that are doing this and you alluded to that. And I think probably at the end of the day, they will be the conduit for providing the, the majority of the vaccinations which occur. There, is there going to be a state or is there right now a statewide listing of who those providers are that are on the list to, you know, put in orders, et cetera?
Uh, yes, uh, um, DP, I believe DPH, uh, they're the most in touch with, um, with that, have it, they have a list and they're reaching out to people, to groups that, you know, helping them get on, you know, um, go through all the paperwork that's needed to become a provider and the like. Um, but it's, and it's apparently it's ever growing.
Is that list published somewhere on?
No, uh, it's not, no, it, it wouldn't be published. Um, there's a, uh, here's my notes from the call yesterday. I think there are roughly eleven hundred, eleven hundred providers who are currently enrolled to be, and this is in Georgia, currently enrolled to be, um, vaccine providers. They're trying to add more and I think they've, they're, they're working with, uh, also with independent pharmacies. I mean, like pharmacies that are smaller than the Walgreens and CVSs and all that. Uh, and they expect, I guess eventually, I don't know what the timeframe is for this, for, do you have about seven hundred of those? Uh, who will be enrolled and, uh, able to receive, um, uh, vaccine? Anyway, those are just my notes from the, from the call yesterday. Uh, but no, it's not, it's not on their website, you know, it's a, it's a never-changing list. Uh, I don't believe that they put that on the website of who is currently a, a provider or enrolled to be a provider.
Yeah, I, I think, y- you know, just, you know, an ask back, I guess, in terms of your communication with the state. Um, I think publishing that, having some sort of place where citizens to be able to go to view that, um, is going to be a critical piece of this, uh, you know, or else if all the calls are funneling into us and we have no, we can't really prefer, refer them to other providers. I mean, it may be, you know, it, it would be useful to have that be sort of an active place that people could be able to make phone calls to these other providers to see, you know, that may be nearer to them, uh, accessible to them, they know, um, uh, to be able to see if they can administer the vaccine as well.
I do believe that that is the ultimate plan. Um, but again, the, we're talking right, right now about who's enrolled, not necessarily, and they might not all have received allocations yet. And I think you wouldn't want to put that information up on a website, uh, until people are re- until these particular providers are ready to start accepting people. So I mean, I think, I think that that is the ultimate plan, cause we in public health certainly want people to know that they can go elsewhere. Um, but we don't, we don't want to, to subject these small pharmacies to the same thing that's happening to us with hundreds and thousands of people contacting them and they don't even have vaccine. So I mean, it, that is the ultimate plan. I just don't know when that's gonna actually happen.
Right. Um, do you have any sense of how many vaccines have been administered within the county by other providers at this point in time?
I, I do not, simply because, you know, remember, they get separate allocations. And so I don't know how many, you know, Emory's been fabulous at getting, uh, uh, getting their, their own staff and, and, and providers, uh, immunized, but I don't know how many that is because they don't go through us. Uh, and I don't, I don't know how many Grady's done and all that. So, I mean, I, I know the information is out there, but it's not residing here at, um, at, at the, at the Board of Health.
All right, well, that goes back, I guess, to my, you know, my ask at the beginning and all of the parties. I don't view that just a Board of Health thing, but if Matt and others could, you know, with their conduits for information reporting from these providers, you know, get information on vaccination stuff that they could share with us. I think it would be particularly useful for us to be able, all to be able to see that thermometer of vaccines go up. Um, the, uh, on the, my next question really on the vaccine piece goes to, um, you know, this isn't a, this isn't a one and done process. It's a two-step process, right? And I guess we're, are we coming up on the second phase of some of the initial dosage? Is that coming up within the next week?
Yeah, in fact, uh, tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow, we're, here at Board of Health, a, a bunch of us who got like, uh, uh, I was. uh, I was the first person vaccinated on here at the Board of Health. I mean, I had to show everybody this is safe and doing it. And I think I'm due for my vaccination tomorrow. My, my, my second dose. So we're starting to, we're, we're starting to see that.
If the, if the dose doesn't occur within, you know, a, within this period of time, the second dose, um, wh- what it, what does it mean and, and?
It doesn't really, it doesn't really mean anything. We, this is the, these are the, this is the dosing schedule that was tested in, in, that was, that was part of the, a part of the research. And that's why we're using it. That's under, in the, in the EUA. There's really no, um, there's, there's no indication that, you know, it has to be done exactly on, you know, day twenty one or day twenty, twenty eight, depending on the vaccination. Um, in fact, other groups are actually looking to see whether or not, how far can you stretch this, um, you know, the, 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 this, the, the scheduling. So, for example, I mean, because basically the second dose is just a boost. It's like the sort of thing you have with like, uh, like measles or tetanus and all that. You get your primary dose and then you get a booster sometime later. So, I mean, like, uh, no one needs to lose any sleep if they can't get their, 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 their second dose, you know, within, you know, right that week or what, or whatever. There's, there's no really, there's no reason to believe that even a second dose given several weeks later uh, won't be effective.
Okay, but we're going to, in our reporting, we kind of have that sort of stood up that sort of think, you know, we're like, we're, we're going to be heavily tracking. If we've administered one, we've administered the second, we're following up with the, the other, the individuals to get there, to get, to get the second dose?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right. I think that was the questions I had on the, uh, vaccine. I did have a question that's may go back to, uh, some of the stuff early, in the earlier slides and not more health slides, but, um, they're related to the, uh, medical examiner's office and the, uh, more capacity, et cetera. And I, and, and I was curious also, we had something on our consent agenda item about, um, I believe, using some staffing sources to address staffing needs they had there. And I guess, I don't know who can address this, whether it's Matt or, or, uh, uh, or the county manager, et cetera. Are we, really, my question is, are we, are we running into staffing issues within our ME's office? And how does that play into, you know, kind of the detail of stuff that was provided for us here relative to COVID? Or does it at all?
Commissioner Ellis, I can try to answer that, Doc, Dr. Paxton. This is Anna Roach. We have, uh, struggled with filling associate ME positions since I started with the county. It's been a constant challenge because of the rarity of, uh, the, uh, medical practice surrounding, uh, forensic pathology. So, uh, over a number of years, we've always supplemented the staffing, uh, with locum tenens. So this is the request that's on the consent agenda, uh, is consistent with, uh, how we have managed, um, that shortage over the years. I am happy to report that we did secure a permanent associate ME who started in November. So we are growing, uh, the practice in the medical examiner's office. Uh, and we have an aggressive recruitment plan, um, in hopes that that will continue to grow um, in, in twenty twenty one and, and even beyond. At this time, it is not affecting our ability to handle, um, our, at this particular time, our capacity to handle uh, deaths with respect to COVID. In terms of capacity for, um, storage of, of the deceased, we do have, we are within our capacity for the trailers that we have procured, um, to secure expanded capacity. Um, but for the first time, as Doug reported in his remarks, we have gone beyond our normal, uh, capacity to store within our facility and started utilization, uh, of the reserve capacity that we built. So again, we're not at risk to exceed capacity right now. Uh, but for the first time, we have tapped into the expanded capacity that we secured.
Okay, thank you. All my questions.
Can, can I just add one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Ellis, to your questions, all of which are good. We are working on with Dr. Paxton and with EMA and the support of EMSI, the exact same kind of plan with both the communications elements, the reporting elements, the staffing elements, uh, for vaccines as we did with testing. Um, I, kind of what my comments were meant to be upfront is we do know how to do this. I think the thing that really caught us all flat footed um, was if you thought of this vaccine rollout, it was almost like a beta test. And then the governor announced full product rollout with no, uh, with no advice and counsel. So now we've got to scramble to put all this together and it has created, I think, uh, the pressure, obviously, that we're all feeling. But I, I am confident that we can put this plan together and do it, uh, do it in the same way with the same, not only execution excellence, but visibility to the public in terms of reporting.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Any other questions for Dr. Paxton? All right, uh, Madam COO, continue please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will quickly, uh, review our reopening plan. Uh, next slide, please, which has become somewhat of a misnomer, which is why we wanted to, uh, take a, just a moment to summarize, uh, some of the things that were underway in twenty twenty and that we achieved. When we use the word reopening to provide the update to the board, we don't want there to be any, um, uh, mistaken impression that nothing has been happening at the county. We've had a tremendous amount of work and effort being, uh, executed by our four, um, sectors here in the county. And so I will provide a quick summary of some of the achievements from twenty twenty. Under Internal Services, our Chief Financial Officer and her team, um, and you have witnessed this through the stakeholder reporting that we have provided, um, not just to the Board of Commissioners, but also to the public, uh, successfully executed and managed, uh, over a hundred million dollars in CARES funding, um, and throughout twenty twenty. Um, and has a plan to continue, uh, that reporting in twenty twenty one with the, any new dollars coming from the federal government. Uh, we have established relationships with three M, Core Owens and Minor and other major corporations. Um, and used with the, through the purchasing department to swiftly execute purchase orders and build a public safety, uh, as well as reopening cache of personal, uh, protective equipment, uh, which we also partnered with our municipalities to distribute. So that was a Herculean task, um, and we're very proud of, of what the purchasing department accomplished there. Um, from an HR standpoint, I cannot tell you how valuable Ken Afferman and his team has been in simply executing the requirements around, um, leave associated with COVID nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, the, in additional, uh, additional, the third bullet there indicates that he and his team were able to track and redeploy underutilized employees to support uh, our elections efforts and other efforts, uh, as we look to, to, to engage employees who were disengaged by virtue of the fact that we reduced services in some areas consistent with the pandemic. Uh, shifting over to HHS, which is our Health and Human Services Department led by, uh, Deputy COO, Dr. Rochelle. We had over two hundred and sixty total individuals served through a disciplined execution of our CARES community funding. Um, and broken down, some of the highlights there are that we had over two hundred and five thousand senior meals delivered. We had over thirty three thousand senior grocery, uh, packages delivered, uh, as well. Um, and one that we're proud of is, uh, recommended by Commissioner Arrington, Vice Chair Arrington at the time, was that over a hundred and fifty, um, close to a hundred and fifty local artists in the creative community were funded. Um, so we're very proud of the work that the HHS D team did in executing the CARES funding in twenty twenty. We also administered significantly through both the Board of Health as well as our Emergency Management Agency, the largest testing program per capita in the state of Georgia. We're very proud of that accomplishment because we believe that it was in large part due to the work of the Board of Health and EMA in focusing on testing, uh, very earlier on, that we were able to control the pandemic to the level that we did um, in such a large metropolitan area. Uh, the other thing that we did with our emergency management team is build an analytics capacity. And, um, Doug, I think it was Matt or Matt mentioned this in his remarks, that was used not only to inform our local decision-making here at the county, but also regional hospital system decision-making as well. On the bottom right, some highlights in public safety were, were that, um, and this is particularly important on that first bullet because when you heard the news from across the nation, um, there were a significant spread among inmates in some uh, prison systems across the country. And so for us to have been able to work collaboratively, uh, with the leadership in the Sheriff's Department and our courts to successfully adjust our programming, that we were able to control the spread among inmates, uh, that is something that we are truly proud of. Another Herculean effort was the virtualization of our entire court operation. It is an essential services, a service that we couldn't simply turn the spigot off. Uh, and Alton Adams, who's the Deputy COO in that area, worked with our justice partners and elected officials in the court systems to quickly virtualize court operations so that we can keep the wheels turning there. Uh, another effort that I'm, um, significantly proud of is under the leadership of, uh, then Chief Halbert and now Chief Gates. We established an election security task force that, uh, in partnership with the FBI, uh, GBI and local law enforcement, we put in place, um, security protocols for, uh, all of our elections, uh, both early voting as well as election day. And was able to establish an information sharing protocol that was, uh, very useful in helping us, uh, track um, and, uh, continued communication throughout those very critical periods, um, during our elections. Finally, in the infrastructure area, I, I felt like I didn't have enough bullets, uh, in particular in this area to describe the work that the folks in our infrastructure team, uh, that completed over twenty twenty. Uh, Glenn Melendez, who is our newly appointed, I don't know that I can say that he's newly appointed anymore, uh, drunk from a virtual fire hose, um, and virtualizing our entire enterprise to enable a remote workforce within days and, and within a few weeks totally. Um, it was quite impressive to watch him and his team at work, uh, respond and be very nimble to all of the things that were happening as we saw the world have to respond to COVID nineteen, um, as did Glenn and his team and in, in quite impressive form. So congratulations to them on that. You know, uh, election support probably could have been written across this entire slide uh, because it was a collaborative, organization-wide effort to support elections. And I believe that, um, I believe that we can all say that the coordinated effort that we took, an approach that we took led to successful elections in twenty twenty and here, uh, yesterday at the top of twenty twenty one as well. Very proud of that work, uh, and all of the commitment that the infrastructure team provided, um, to support, uh, what elections had, uh, going on. Uh, this election was monumental, um, and from a participation, voter participation standpoint, um, was unlike any other in our lifetimes. And so again, we're very proud of the work that this entire organization pulled together to support, uh, that ever-changing effort, including, by the way, new, uh, voting machines. Uh, the other thing that's not on here in a bullet, um, that I'd like to congratulate both External Affairs led by Jessica Corbett as well as, uh, the CIO and his team, uh, is virtualization of our entire Board of Commissioners meetings. Um, that, that is, uh, now, uh, a standard, I think, for, uh, many other organizations to follow. So congratulations on that. We also broke ground on Big Creek, our three hundred million dollar, um, water treatment plant project, uh, in the fall of twenty twenty, which was a significant effort led by David Clark and his team, renovated Assembly Hall. Uh, Ellis Kirby was around here, uh, every single day, working with his infrastructure team to make sure that we had Assembly Hall ready when we, for when we return to whatever normal looks like. Um, I'd like to take a moment on that last bullet there to give some specific about what, uh, Joe Davis and his team did to stand up barrier cleaning and infection control resources um, over the last several months as we battled, uh, COVID nineteen. It included barrier applications for over four million square feet of county facilities, uh, responding to over a hundred and fifty sanitizing requests since June when they began, thirty-five or more facial temperature scanners that are touchless, two hundred and fifty sneeze guards, and the list goes, uh, on and on. Um, I have been never more proud, um, than to have worked with this team over the last nine months uh, to respond to this pandemic. We did it in world-class fashion. And twenty twenty was a banner year for service in twen, in, in Fulton County. Very proud of the work that we were able to accomplish in all four areas of service that we provide here in Fulton County. Next slide. So Commissioners, our gating criteria for reopening, as you know, uh, has not been met. I will not spend a great deal of time on this slide, except to reiterate two points that Doug Schuster made in his remarks. We are at a hospitalization level that is three hundred percent higher, uh, than the last time we had a discussion about our, uh, benchmarks. Uh, and our infection rate, the seven-day average is up a hundred and twenty percent. So with respect to the downward traject, trajectory in the seven-day average of positive cases, um, we are, indicator remains, uh, red and therefore from a reopening standpoint, uh, we remain in, uh, a phase one, uh, rather than taking steps to move to phase two. Next slide. Again, thanks to Commissioner Hall, we have gotten into Vice Chair Hall. We have gotten into the practice of reporting, uh, positives within, um, COVID-positive employees within our workforce. Um, unfortunately, I am, uh, regret to, uh, report that once again, we have met our highest mark in terms of employee positives, which is forty individuals. Uh, we met this mark, uh, at our last meeting, which was the highest since we began reporting. And again, unfortunately, in the last two weeks, we've managed to meet that mark again. Um, again, this is our Fulton County family. Every positive, uh, is meaningful here in Fulton County, but when it hits home, uh, it's even more difficult. Um, we did see a significant number of positives in the Board of Health, uh, as well as the, the clerk of the Superior Court's office, um, some of our, uh, most essential workers and frontline workers. Uh, and we also saw a high number of positives in the library, uh, a team that has been redeployed to support many different areas uh, and has been challenged, uh, to re-envision how they deliver services. So, uh, we, our thoughts and our, our prayers are with, uh, these departments as they, um, struggle with supporting their employees who have been positive over the last two weeks. Next line. Commissioners, that brings our cumulative, uh, employee positive number. It looks like it's cut off there at the bottom. But that grand total number since we began tracking, uh, is at two hundred and fifty-nine. Next slide. So again, we, uh, are keeping, uh, our powder dry, as it were, with respect to reopening. We are not moving on to phase two, given, uh, where we are with the pandemic. We are in a phase one posture, which is as pretty much described there. We're continuing to close senior centers, developmental disabilities, as well as art centers, and continue operations only for emergency essential services. And we will continue virtual contactless service delivery in areas where we can. Uh, the one thing on this slide before we move on, that I would like to highlight is that we received notice here, uh, while we were in the Board of Commissioners meeting, that our tag offices will be closed from January twelfth through January nineteenth. It is for a reason unrelated to COVID, based on the information that we have. It is because the state is upgrading their system. And so what the Tax Commissioner has stated in his, uh, press release is that he is encouraging anybody with tags due to expire during that period, uh, to renew, uh, early on the front end because of that closure. There is a press release from the Tax Commissioner's Office available with additional details. Uh, and this information has been published to the county's website. We do plan to have, uh, adequate signage and communication to the public to advertise this closure. Next slide. Next slide. Commissioners, at the last meeting, we talked a little bit about how we would try to address the issue of childcare benefits to continue to support our workforce as some are required to be in-person for work. And so we had a successful year implementing our childcare benefit to support COVID-19 in 2020. The Chief Human Resources Officer, Kenneth Harmon, did pull some statistics together about utilization, which he's going to take a few minutes to go through right now. And then I will close out with our recommendation on childcare for 2021, then open for questions. Kenneth?
Good morning, commissioners. Actually, good afternoon. I'm Kenneth Harmon, Chief HR Officer, and happy new year. First, let me thank you on behalf of the employees who were able to benefit from the childcare slash eldercare benefit that you authorized underneath and utilization of the CARES Act funding. Just to refresh your memory, your authorization granted us the authority to spend roughly about $520,000 in CARE Act funding to allow the employees in those critical roles that have to perform their jobs onsite or interacting with the public on a daily basis to report to work to continue that effort, if in fact they had some concern with childcare due to all of the school closures that occurred during the COVID-19 event. As you can see from the chart, as we peaked in September when the schools started to reopen, where we had as high as 378 employees enroll in the program. But as slowly as those employees started to make adjustments to their, their needs and schools started to reopen with in-person sessions, that has now tapered off to roughly about 222 employees that are currently still enrolled and taking advantage of the program. Employees have 30 days after having a childcare provider provide the services either in-home or onsite at their, within a childcare center, to remit their invoices to care.com directly for reimbursement. And that process has been running well as the feedback that I've received, not only from the employees, but from the care.com providers. On average, the employee population that is utilizing this benefit since May to where we are now, the last report that I have is in November, they would utilize an average of 213 days of care to ensure that they were able to report to work and provide their services. Currently, right now, since we are in the last, we're in a 30-day cycle for when schools closed in December, those employees have until January roughly 15th or 20th to remit their invoices to care.com so that we can do a reconciliation with the employees' home department to verify that the leave was used accordingly. As you all may be aware with the, and the reports that my colleagues provided today, there is a spike happening right now within the state of Georgia, within Fulton County specifically. And HR, we are monitoring on a weekly basis all the school districts and the city school systems that our employees currently have kids in to determine what their current status are. As of right now, we have four school districts that have indicated that they will still be, still remain within a fully virtual setting. And I understand that Henry County has a delayed opening. So employees within those school districts that have childcare or eldercare concerns that need to be addressed so that they can report to work would be able to continue to leverage a benefit into the new year. And again, just to highlight some of the reasons, the top two biggest reasons for the childcare utilization, of course, is for childcare that was unavailable and because of distance learning. And commissioners, at the end of my presentation or when we hit the question section, I'll be available to answer any questions that you may have related to this benefit that you guys authorized for the employees. And again, thank you on behalf of them. This was in our last chat and too with the county manager. This was one of the well-received kudos that the county received during the COVID-19 for those employees that were very beneficial, that this benefit was made available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. Next slide, please. So commissioners, Mike? We are, we did make a recommendation to the county manager that we, based on all of the reasons that Kenneth stated in his remarks, that we do continue the childcare benefit in 2021. Because this, this benefit is somewhat dependent on our reopening posture, also dependent on, as Kenneth mentioned, what schools are reopening and in what posture, we decided that the best way to manage this benefit is on a month-to-month basis. And so with the county manager's approval, we will inform him of the utilization on a monthly basis. And through his authority, will give us the flexibility to adjust the contract, the contract amounts as needed. Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we are open to take questions on reopening as well as the childcare benefit and anything presented in this section.
Thank you, Madam COO. Commissioners, any questions or comments regarding this section?
This is Commissioner Hall.
Vice Chair Hall.
Okay.
Vice Chair Hall, you got to get accustomed to this.
I couldn't hear you. I think that we're having some problems with the audio. Some, some of the things that are being said are choppy. And then I'm getting text messages that on the other end with the Zoom that many of us are not being heard clearly by the public. So I just wanted to say that. But Anna, this is such a good job. These numbers are alarming, though. I'm sad to hear about our Fulton County family. And I noticed on the COVID-19 positive employees report, that page, the number for the Board of Commissioners should actually be two. Because one of those would be my team member who thankfully got past COVID-19, got over it.
Okay, we will make that adjustment. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Hall.
I have one thing, Mr. Chair. Just a
Mr. Mayor, Vice Chair, are you finished?
Yes, sir, I'm finished.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, just a, just a request. I've had this happen sort of at two facilities now and most recently at the downtown. They, could we, could we do a sort of a review of our hand sanitizer stations? I had five of them and four of them were empty. And I had the same thing at another facility where they were empty for about, about two weeks as you entered in the door.
Commissioner Ellis, that certainly is, is not our standard. We apologize for that and we will get right on it. I'm sure Joe Davis is hearing this and flailing right now. So I will go, I will go calm him down and we'll get that corrected today.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Further questions? If not, Madam CEO, who is next?
I will turn it over to the CFO, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam CFO.
I'm sorry, real quick.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair.
I just noticed that there is a question that has been sitting out in the Q and A section, and I'm not sure if we addressed it or not. It says, is there an updated total for all absentee ballots in Fulton County? And I guess that should have been asked during the presentation by Richard Barron. I don't know if it was addressed or not, though, but it's sitting out.
Madam Vice Chair, I believe that Mr. Barron said that they still had to open the packages and count to find out how many there were. I do not know if he has that answer. I will connect with Jessica Corbett and will interject when we know the answer and provide that information.
Thank you so much.
All right, Madam CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, commissioners. Happy New Year. Sharon Whitmore, Chief Financial Officer. I have for you today the final CARES Fund update, the closeout report, if you will. In 2020, the county was awarded and received 104.5 million in CARES Act funds. Through the end of the year, we did fully expend the allocation that we were awarded. That resulted in 18.3 million being spent on behalf of the community relief effort, 14.7 million for the health response, 46.4 for operational stability, which included the acquisition of PPE for the county and the municipalities within the county, and as well as the $25 million municipal assistance fund that the Board of Commissioners authorized. Next slide, please. From our last report that we made in, in December, we wanted to share with you the changes that were made to our allocations and various commitments. In the closeout process, you'll see on the left-hand side of the screen, we did reduce allocations in both community relief and health response and moved those to operational stability. That was done as part of our plan to closeout process to ensure that all of the funds that we had committed and obligated, be it through a commitment, a placeholder, or an actual purchase order, that we were able to, in essence, sweep those funds at the end of the year to do a offset against our own internal public safety cost, qualifying internal public, public safety costs so that we could ensure a full expenditure of the resources. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see where the funds were moved from in the commitments category. We reduced the job program by 500,000. The testing plan was reduced by 3.7 million. Spock operations released 100,000. And then from the general operational support, we had about 3.5 million that we were able to sweep down into the public safety payroll offset line, a $7.7 million increase. And then also, we added about 160,000 to the healthcare costs to cover our own known employee-related COVID healthcare costs. Next slide, please. This slide is simply showing you the, the list of the purchase orders as they closed out. There's a couple of slides related for this. I was not necessarily going to highlight any particular PO, but just simply share with you the, the list. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see down in the bottom right-hand corner that the total amount of purchase order payments that were made was 40,901,766. Next slide, please. In addition to the payments that we made against purchase orders, we made payments on payment voucher and by wire transfer for a number of activities. Those payments totaled 63.5 million. The largest component of that, of course, was the payments that we made to our municipal partners in the municipal reimbursement program. That totaled 25 million. That was followed by the payments made under the community relief program for activities other than the job program. That was 16.2 million. And then our public safety payroll offset was 13.1 million. We did have our hazard pay program, which was 4.6 million. And that was for the hazard pay that was offered to employees during the earlier months of the pandemic response last year. So when you add the 63.5 to the 40 million from the purchase order payments, that's how we, we rounded out our use, utilization of the CARES Act funds. Next slide, please. This is the detail of the expenditures for the community relief program. In our first phase, we spent 1.4 million on meals for seniors, 1.7 for other assistance also related to seniors and residents. In our homelessness category, we had allocated and spent 400,000 for isolation and quarantine and 200,000 for a specific testing program for the homeless population. Under economic relief in phase one, we spent 2.6 million for, to meet food insecurity and provide other economic assistance to Fulton County residents. And we also committed 1.5 million to a small business loan program. In our second phase of our community response, we provided an additional 2 million for meals for seniors as well as an additional 3.9 million for other assistance for county residents and seniors. In the homelessness category, we provided 816,000 for support services. And then lastly, in economic development, we entered into a job training program with Goodwill where we spent a little over $2 million. And we also had a program specifically designed for the artistic community that we expended 1.4 billion, bringing the total to 18.3 million for the community relief package. Next slide, please. This next slide is, again, the city-by-city summary of the municipal support program. You'll see that the full allocation was paid out to every city. In addition to that, we did receive the documentation required for the advanced payments that were made to the cities as well as all of the documentation required for the full, the full allocation. Next slide, please. Earlier in his opening remarks, the county manager mentioned that I would share with you what our, our plans are for the emergency response fund that we've established as part of the 2021 budget. And on this slide, on the left-hand side of the screen, that's the, the information that I'll share with you. We intend to continue to present to the board at each meeting our plan and utilization of the funds that have been set aside for this purpose. We will continue to monitor how we are allocating those funds and what the needs are kind of on a monthly basis. As you can see from today's discussion with the Board of Health and with our EMA group, we are transitioning between testing and vaccination programs. So we want to make sure that we are as flexible as possible and being able to address the greatest need at the point in time that it needs to be addressed. And then we'll also, of course, continue to monitor the availability of federal and state resources. And with that in mind, on the right-hand side of the screen, specifically with regards to the recent passage of the Consolidated Appropriations Act at the end of the year, we are still working with outside counsel and our lobbying teams to identify what funding opportunities may exist within that act for the county. In addition to that, our grant staff is reviewing it as well for any specific grant opportunities that may come out of that. Our initial review indicates that the county is eligible for the emergency rental assistance that's embedded in that, in that act. The amount yet is not determined. That there was 25 billion that was set aside specifically for this purpose. And local governments that have a population of 200,000 or more are eligible for that, eligible for that. In the state of Georgia, there are 12 local governments that have been identified, 11 counties and the city of Atlanta. So once again, our funds will be distributed to us excluding the city of Atlanta's population. There is a certification that's required as part of this emergency rental assistance funding. And originally, we thought that we would have until the next board meeting to present that certification for the board's approval. We've learned today, as a matter of fact, We've learned today, as a matter of fact, during the board meeting, that the deadline is now July 12th. And I believe the county attorney has a request of the board relative to this particular issue. So we'll continue to present to you each board meeting the plan for and the use of the emergency response fund. And we will continue to update you on any funding opportunities that are made available through this Consolidated Appropriations Act or any other funding that may become available. Patrice, did you have?
Yes, Commissioners. Because of the time constraints, literally, I found out at 11 o'clock last night, they actually sent the email to me as the person who was the notification person for Fulton County that we had to get this in earlier than the statute actually had in place. We thought we had 30 days. They actually now have said this has to be in by the 12th. What we want is the same authorization from you all for the county manager to sign basically the same one paragraph certification that allows the county to receive the funds. Just like the last time, it was a one paragraph. He is the chief executive officer of the county by statute. And it just has a certification that he wants, that we want to receive the funds and that the funds then will be made available to us like last time. But we have to get it in by the 12th, which is before your next board meeting. We were under the impression that we would have it presented to you on the 20th. So we need a motion.
Yeah, that being said, I will entertain a motion to provide that authorization to the manager at this time.
I'll so move, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second. Any further explanation needed? Let's cast your votes, please. Commissioner Housman back yet?
Yes and yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Arrington? Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Yes.
Is it appropriate for a question on this slide?
Yes, sir.
I think it's very important that both on the left side, the monitoring availability and the resource allocation and needs, and particularly any rental assistance funding, that we really communicate well with our city partners on this one. I don't know whether there'd be some opportunity to share funding with them, but in any event, I think it's very important that we sit down with them and talk about this and how it's all going to work.
All right, duly noted, Commissioner. Chair. Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah, I'd echo Commissioner Morris's comments as well. And, you know, I think that sooner we can all learn more about this, and I don't know if we'll have enough to share on Friday, but certainly an acknowledgement of it, I think, on Friday would be important. Yeah, I read some of the text on this, and it looks like, you know, this is going to have a lot more specificity about how it can be used and who can qualify and that sort of stuff so that the administration of this may be a little bit more difficult than, you know, than what we had with sort of the general CARES Act money. And there may be only certain providers where it might be equipped and stood up to do that. But it's obviously very important that we have collaboration with folks on this. But I think it's also, but even more so important, that when this becomes available, that we're able to quickly deploy it. Yeah, I've been in contact with several citizens who, you know, were in, you know, really a bind right now. And many of the agencies that we work with took a hiatus or, you know, or didn't, or were out of funds at the end of the year, couldn't offer assistance, or weren't going to start, you know, kind of back until January 15th. So it's, you know, it's going to be critical for us to do that communication and collaboration. But it's also, I think, very critical for us to be able to move and support people quickly on this. You know, so, you know, to me, I mean, two big takeaways from today. I mean, the urgency around the vaccine and the plan and getting the stuff out and this right here really comes a close second, so.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Any other questions for the CFO? No further questions. Madam COO, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, that's it for the COVID update. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, it's approximately, it's approaching, actually, right about 1 o'clock. Let us, at this point, this is a great place to break for, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
There's, yes, there's one person going back for public comment before we recess for lunch. Is Mr. Carver?
Yes, I am, sir. And my apologies for earlier, I had a technical computer, a technical issue with the device I'm using to communicate. So I apologize. The last of the public comments is from Donna Rintfer Lawson, also of Atlanta. Peace elected, selected, and rejected Folco family and constituents. My request is to have my rights fully restored for FPLS usage. Library Board of Trustees Chair Phyllis Bailey stated that she has no knowledge of the expulsion rendered by County Attorney Patrice Perkins Hooker. Ms. Bailey's statements and subsequent directives can be read in the approved library board meeting minutes. Furthermore, she has referenced Dr. Pamela Rochelle as the final authority over the library and the Board of Trustees. Commissioner Marvin Arrington's office is aware of my concerns. Dorsha Simmons, his chief of staff, has intervened. The other critical issues are library, our current library staff and usage of those individuals as mandated election and/or poll workers. Gail Hunter-Holloman, library executive director, has not been as transparent about this reassignment process as hoped for. However, she did state that county manager Richard Anderson had control over the activated plan. A concise, comprehensive, and reader-friendly report is expected for public viewing on how library staff were used to fill positions that may have a number of pro and con factors impacting voters, voting, and potential temporary staffing opportunities in questionable matters during this 2020-21 election season. We must remember that the library budget considerations for this much near department, inclusive of who remains at their job and why. That is it.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to recess for lunch and the executive session where we will consider issues relating to personnel, real estate, and litigation. Is there a motion? All right, I will move. Is there a second?
Agreed.
All right, properly move this second. Cast your votes, please. Commissioner Housman?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
A motion passed, as you know.
So what do we need, 10 minutes to get settled in? Is that enough time? So let's say 1:15, we will begin the executive session. And everyone has the numbers have already been forwarded, the numbers have already been forwarded to everyone. It has.
Do we have the agenda?
And the agenda.
The agenda is being sent to you electronically as we speak, waiting for this to happen.
Okay, so 1:15.
Okay, doing a sound check. Ms. Commissioner Abdul-Rahman, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morris, can you hear us?
Look at this guy that was at the...
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, thank you. Let's see. Commissioner Hausmann, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes.
I need to find out something, maybe I just missed it today. How do people, regular people who are in the over sixty-five kid...
Regular over sixty-five.
Commissioner Hall, can you hear us? Commissioner Hall, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Voluntary.
Check in with everybody, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk?
Welcome back, Commissioners. We're going to do a roll call, please. Chairman Rob Pitt.
Present.
Commissioner Hausmann.
Present.
Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Morris.
Present.
Vice Chair Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Arrington. And Commissioner Abdul-Rahman.
All right. I entertain a motion to resume the regular order of business, no objections, all right? Items from executive session, are you ready, Madam County Attorney?
Yes, I am. Excuse me. I need a motion to approve the recommendation, the recommend, approve the representation request that we discussed in agenda item number one.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Properly moved and seconded, cast your votes, please. Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington? Commissioner Abdul-Rahman? Rahman?
Yes.
I vote yes.
When motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
Continue, Madam County Attorney.
I also need a motion to approve the representation request discussed in item number two of the executive session agenda.
All right, is there a motion? I'll second, as spoke, please, Commissioner Hausmann? Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall? Commissioner Arrington? Commissioner, excuse me, Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, and have one, is that all you have?
Yes.
Madam County Attorney, the other item regarding the interim, interim county attorney, I move to approve the appointment of Kay Woodward Burwell as interim county attorney effective Wednesday, January twenty... Twenty-first.
Thursday, yeah, the twenty-first.
Thursday, January twenty-first, and to set her compensation for that interim appointment to an amount equivalent to that of the departing county attorney. And I'll move approval, and get a second, please.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Abdul-Rahman?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, congratulations. Continue.
On page six, under county manager's items. Two zero, two one, that's zero zero one eight, request ratification of countywide emergency procurement. On page six, under County Managers Items, two zero, two one dash zero zero one eight, request ratification of countywide emergency procurement.
Move approval.
All right, I'll second. Questions and comments are not let's vote, please. Houseman?
Well, I was gonna ask a question.
Sure.
Um, it's really in regard to grant money that the Elections Department got at our last meeting on consent and a report that it's not normally in, and now I see spending for registrations and elections, and I would just like to request a complete accounting of everything with regard to the elections, because I don't know that we are fully informed of that in a way that we can really understand what we, what we invested in this time.
Okay. We can most certainly do that.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Houseman, let me make sure I understand, I think I agree with you, you're saying a complete accounting of all expenditures?
And revenue sources, um, you know, to learn in the media that we had, and my oversight for not catching it in the Grants Report, the last page of the Grants Report on the Consent Agenda, I believe, is where it was, um, you know, so I just feel like we are getting asked a lot of questions, um, a lot of attention is still gonna be paid to us, and I'd just like to understand exactly what has occurred.
Okay, I agree with you.
What was planned.
I agree, and the manager says they will get on it ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there was a motion to properly move made to approve. All right, let's vote, please. Commissioner Houseman?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington?
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul Rahman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. One dash zero zero one nine, Finance Review and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2021 Final Adopted Budget and the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Resolution.
All right, how do you want to?
We, we do have a updated view, so there's a few PowerPoint slides that we'd like to go through.
Yes.
Wonderful.
And Ms. Whitmore would be prepared to do that.
Madam CFO?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon again Commissioners, Sharon Whitmore, Chief Financial Officer, joined today by Hakim Ashakoa, um, and we will make this brief presentation, and then we'll be prepared to take any questions from the Board regarding the 2021 budget. As a reminder where we are in the process, um, we presented the budget to the Board in November pursuant to the County's budget ordinance, um, we held the one legally required budget hearing in December, um, which sets us up for the Board to be able to approve the budget in its final form today or at our next Board meeting. Um, next slide, please. Um, the, uh, Mike, can you move the, the little screen there so I can see the whole slide? Commissioners, this first slide is to update you on where we ended 2020 as compared to where we originally projected our 2020 results. Um, at the top of the, the slide, you'll see our revenue and expense results. When we made our mid-year projection, projection, we were anticipating revenue of about 713 million, um, actual results were 724.1 for a difference, a positive variance of 10.9 million. On the expenditure side, we were anticipating our expenditures to run around 721.3 million, they were 702.5, um, which is also a positive variance of 18.8 million. So that allowed us to add to our bottom line by a total amount of 29.7 million, bringing our ending fund balance up to 226.9 million from a projected fund balance of 197.2. Next slide, please. The major reasons for these changes in our, uh, from projections to actual relate on the revenue side primarily to the timing of receipt of current year property taxes. We had based our projection on a anticipated collection rate of around 91 percent, um, and, um, collections came in closer to 95 for the year, so that accounts for, um, uh, the majority of the change, a $22 million change for timing. The, uh, the impact of that, of course, is that in our 2021 revenue appropriations, we will have to make an adjustment for the fact that we received the funds this year instead of in future years as originally anticipated. Um, we also did not experience as significant, um, of a reduction in our motor vehicle taxes as what we had anticipated, um, at the mid-year point, and so we collected 2.9 million more than what our projection held. That amount is actually still lower than what we collected in 2019, um, but the reduction just was not, um, as much as anticipated, uh, at mid-year. Um, a couple of other, um, items that impacted revenues this year that will have an impact in 2021, um, as well are, are, um, public utility taxes. In, um, in, uh, the fall of this year, the, uh, Tax Commissioner and the Tax Assessor's Office worked together to send out temporary public utility tax bills, um, for the current year. Uh, historically, what we have seen is that, uh, the, the time period in which the values are received from the state on the public utility digest is not such that, that the current year bills go out in the current year with a current year due date, um, but that did happen this year, so we had increased our projection. Um, as it turns out, even though those bills went out with a current year due date, um, we did not collect about 7 million of that, um, public utility tax levy, so that is going to move over as well into, um, 2021. Um, the next two items, uh, deal with adjustments to our projections. Um, as you know, uh, earlier this year, the Board of Commissioners took an action to, um, allow the Tax Commissioner to waive the, um, fee on all, um, online payments, um, and credit card payments, and, um, the, between that action and just the total amount of, um, commissions collected, uh, we, um, did not collect about 6.1 million of what we had thought we would collect in commissions on tax collections this year. We are actually offsetting, um, the waiver of those fees against the commissions when they're paid over to the county. And then the last item on the revenue side is related to sales taxes, um, we did see a bit of a decline, a bit more of a decline than we originally anticipated, uh, in, uh, regular local option sales tax collection by about 800,000. Um, on the expenditure side, the major impacts relate to the, um, offset that we made at the end of the year, uh, to be able to ensure that we fully expended, um, the CARES Fund resources that we were provided, uh, we offset our public, um, safety payroll by about 13 million dollars this year, so that was a, um, reduction to our general fund expenditures. Um, and, uh, and then the next item are just the, um, general, um, uh, cumulative effect of unspent operating funds from our various, um, uh, forward-facing customer service departments that, um, we did not incur those costs because our facilities were not fully open and operational, um, this year, um, uh, you know, for the full year. Next slide, please. Um, so as we move into, um, the impact that the changes in our actual results in 2020 have on, um, 2021, we wanted to just sort of summarize them, um, for you. So on the addition side, on the, um, carryover of the billed but uncollected, uh, public utility taxes, we have, we're recommending a $7 million, um, adjustment, uh, in, um, in that revenue, uh, category in 2021. Um, similarly, because we saw the, um, uh, motor vehicle taxes, um, stay relatively, um, consistent, they were slightly lower than 2019, um, we are, are recommending that we increase the appropriation for the motor vehicle, um, taxes to get us, uh, back to a, um, a level in line with what our previous year collections have been. And this is primarily centered around, um, the, the piece of the motor vehicle tax that's centered around, uh, new car sales. Um, we do need to make a couple of reductions, um, and those are in the, uh, prior year property tax category, we need to, uh, reduce that by about 17.5 million, um, to account for the portion that we had anticipated, um, uh, in the 2021 budget that we actually collected in, uh, 2020. And then lastly, an adjustment on the, um, commissions and the collections, um, the commission collections with the credit card waiver offset in it so that we can sort of right-size that for what we think our collections amount will be, our commission collections amount will be going forward. The net effect is that we would need to reduce, um, 2021, uh, revenue by about 12.4 million. Next slide, please. On the expenditure side, um, we have a, a couple of recommendations, um, for, uh, allocation of some additional resources that are available because we were able to bring forward, um, uh, more and, and because we were able to make that public safety offset against our CARES Act funds at the end of the year. Um, so we have, uh, in the additions category, we wanted to, um, set aside an additional 11 mil, 11 million dollars towards our emergency response, um, reserve fund that we've established in the general fund. Um, we have identified, uh, three and a half million dollars to, um, set aside for the potential Board of Health, um, transition, that would cover the compensated absence payout, um, that would be required for those employees, as well as, um, provide the funding to meet the, um, fringe benefit differential, um, uh, funding left, uh, funding level commitment, um, in order for the employee salaries to remain the same. And then the last item in the additions category is, as a result of the, um, uh, new, newly elected Commissioner, um, we have some, uh, payroll and other related costs from the, um, outgoing Commissioner's Office that we wanted to be sure that we, um, we funded to allow, um, the district, the new District Six Commissioner to have full access, uh, to the reso, resources for, um, that district for the year. Um, we do have one, um, transfer of funding that we're recommending, um, it is a transfer of 2.1 million from the, um, IT operating budget to non-agency to support our pay-as-you-go capital plan. We had originally, uh, funded 3.5 million into IT to support the recurring costs associated with the, um, improvements that we've made to our IT infrastructure for, uh, cybersecurity, um, and as part of our, our long-term, um, IT roadmap. After some analysis by the CIO, we determined that, uh, this 2.1 million will not be needed, um, in this year to support those ongoing, um, costs, and so we wanted to move those back to, uh, capital, um, for the Facilities Department to use to support our, um, annual, uh, pay-as-you-go capital. And then lastly, uh, we needed to, um, also allocate, uh, 2.4 million, uh, in order to be able to maintain our fund balance reserve percentage, um, at 16.67 percent of budgeted expenditures. Next slide, please. This last slide just summarizes, um, uh, all of the information that I've just shared, um, it shows you how the, um, additional resources that were made available as a result of our 2020, uh, performance being better than projected, that is 29.7 million, and then how those funds, um, are, uh, being, uh, integrated into the 2021 budget with the, uh, 12.4 million being allocated for, uh, the revenue impacts and 17.3 being allocated, um, for expenditures as previously noted, um, on Slide Five. Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, that completes the, uh, brief, um, presentation and update, and, uh, we are prepared to, um, answer any questions that the Board may have, unless the manager has.
Uh, vice, it's not vice chair, that's it. Uh, thank you very much, um, thank you, thank you very, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, please, uh, thank you very much, um, Madam CEO, uh, Commissioners, can I, can we take just about a five-minute, uh, recess? I need to communicate with you. We need to expedite this agenda, but just a five-minute recess if there are no objections. Can you?
Okay.
Mute everything here, uh? You can't mute this?
We're going for the recess.
Just a minute.
Are you trying to go into Executive Session?
No, he's going, he's communicating, yeah. There's a armed standoff at the U.S. Capitol right now. Commissioner, check, check your emails, Commissioners.
Yes.
Is that U.S. or state Capitol?
U.S. Capitol.
My, um, my phone's not even syncing with the email, so I can't see what anybody else sees. It appears my phone hasn't synced since 219.
Natalie, I'll, I'll give you a call on your cell if you like.
Thank you, I appreciate that so much.
Form back now. You ready?
Hello?
Hello? Mr. Chair, y'all are on mute.
Okay.
We ready? For your patience, Commissioners, um, in the interest of time, uh, we're at the bottom, where are we?
Page six.
At the bottom of page six, without any objections, we will hold the, uh, item zero zero one nine until our next meeting. Let's be prepared to move forward with that. So continue, Madam, um, Clerk.
Okay, bottom of page six, two one dash zero zero two zero, Information Technology, request approval of recommended proposal to perform the upgrade of IT infrastructure.
All right, any questions on this one? All right, motion is to approve our second, cast your votes, please, Houseman.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Morris. Vice Chair Hall.
Yes.
Arrington. Abdul Rockman. Oh, yes.
I voted yes, Mr. Chairman.
And motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
All right, the next two, let's take, those are both real estate and asset management. Let's take those two together, Madam Clerk.
On page seven, two one dash zero zero two one, request approval to renew existing contract to provide standby repair, maintenance of building structures, structures or other real property project, projects. Two one dash zero zero two two, request approval to renew existing contracts to provide standby roof maintenance.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, cast your votes, please, uh, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And motion passes, four yeas.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Two one dash zero zero two three, Human Resources Management, request approval and amendment to the HR policy criminal background check.
I have a question.
Question, uh, Vice Chair.
Okay, um, in the policy, or, uh, is this supposed to be a memo? I'm not sure. Well, the, um, the first sheet that was available on sire as it relates to this, um, item has, um, it says Agenda Item Summary. Under Scope of Work, there is a line here that says a criminal background check may be required for current employees on a department-wide basis in periodic intervals if established in a written supplemental department procedure. And I wanted to ask, what could or would happen that may require a current employee to have to get another background check after they've already been employed?
Mr. Herman, are you there?
Uh, yes, Mr. Herman is here, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, wha- what we're trying to do with this proposed, um, policy change is, uh, only, uh, when, um, the employee is changing jobs. Uh, that's primarily why, uh, we are adopting this change. Uh, another reason why we've, um, uh, we've come to recommend this to you is at, at the request of the incoming probate court judge, uh, there is some requirement that, uh, her staff has the, has to be legally fit to perform those functions. And she wanted to conduct a, um, a, a re-evaluation or background check of the staff, but didn't have the authority to do so underneath our current policy. So this would also allow her to do, um, uh, this exercise. Uh, and we have similar policies in, in the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff has this as, uh, one of his policies and procedures, but it's just not a countywide, uh, uh, policy or procedure or posture that the county has the ability to do this. And in the scenario that I pointed out too in my, um, my informational memo, uh, was, uh, just to give you a sense of what could happen, uh, by, um, uh, not being able to reassess, uh, current employees' background as they transition from job to job to job within the county.
Thank you.
Okay. I just, I don't necessarily want to belabor this, but I wouldn't, still kind of struggling to why this is necessary, but I'd rather have just a motion to hold till I can get some more further detail, answer some question, get some questions answered about it.
All right, uh, substitute motion to hold.
I'll second.
All right, let's, let's vote on the most, substitute motion to hold, Houseman.
Yeah.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall.
Yes.
Arrington.
Yes.
Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Bottom page seven, two one dash zero zero two four, District Attorney, request approval of resolution pursuant to OCGA fifteen eighteen nineteen E two, approving salary supplements for the state-paid assistant district attorneys.
Now, is this really the same subject matter as what the, the Sheriff wanted on the agenda? Same subject matter?
It, it, it relates to salary supplements, but they're two different provisions, yes.
Understand, but a salary supplement, so we take these together, right? Our next meeting, have some discussions about that possible.
Is this to rat, well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this just to ratify what we already have in place but was not ratified previously that we can't find a record thereof?
There, there is no record, you're correct, Commissioner Ellis, of the salaries that have been paid to staff. So this was to make certain that the board formally approved it and then to make a decision of whether or not you wanted to go up to the fifty thousand, which is the current limit on state law, in state law.
I did have my hand up, though, before any of that discussion started.
I'd like to follow, but I may.
And I may as well.
Okay, just a minute, just a minute, Ellis, just a minute, please. We may have, okay, continue, Ellis, uh, Vice Chair Hall, there was, Mr. Morris, who else?
I was actually, I had my hand up before all of that.
All right, Vice Chair Hall, Commissioner Ellis, and Commissioner Morris.
And Houseman.
And Houseman.
Maybe.
No, wait, one more time.
Depends on if they have, they asked my questions.
Vice Chair Hall, Commissioner Ellis, Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Houseman. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, let me just start with, um, I looked through this and could not find how many positions that this is talking about. What is the total cost to do this? What are the state salaries in comparison to Fulton County's funded salaries? Um, because it seems to be like an open checkbook. So can the county manager maybe speak to that, or our, or Madam CFO?
Vice Chair Hall, I can tell you that currently there were, uh, fourteen filled positions that, um, would have been eligible for a salary supplement and two vacancies. Uh, the amount that has been established in the District Attorney's budget for supplements is a little over a million dollars, um, with about six hundred and twenty thousand of that being for salary, the salary portion, and, um, a little over three hundred ninety thousand for, uh, benefits. I don't know the amount that, that the state, um, pays for each position. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't, I don't have that information.
Okay, wait, so you don't know the amount for the state? And isn't this to supplement?
It would be a salary supplement, yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
So you don't know how much we would actually need to supplement from the county side?
As I, as I understand it, um, and Patrice can correct me if I'm wrong, the statute provides for no more than a fifty thousand dollar supplement. That would be the cap that each of the state-funded ADAs would be eligible for, would be, uh, a cap of fifty thousand.
And so is this, um, I'll, um, so this item is, um, from the DA stating that, basically that she's okay with no more than fifty thousand being the supplement for these positions?
Yes, ma'am, as I understand it, the District Attorney, uh, was, um, involved in the drafting of the, um, resolution with the County Attorney's Office.
And have you already, um, found the funding on the county side to do this?
Currently, uh, we have a, about six hundred and twenty thousand that's available for the salary component. That's if we continue to offer full benefits, um, uh, to go along with this supplement. If we were to not offer benefits, then we would have a million dollars, which would be, uh, sufficient to cover the fifty thousand for the current sixteen positions. And I believe that would leave a little, um, in reserve.
So are you bringing this back for us through soundings?
These funds are already in the District Attorney's budget. It's based off of the supplements that were paid under the previous District Attorney.
Okay, so sh- so the District, the current District Attorney does not need any additional funds from the county side. There, these funds are already in her budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
What? Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Morris, Commissioner Houseman.
Fifty, I said that.
Yeah, that, that was basically my question. I wanted to know how many, and it looks like with sixteen positions and six hundred and twenty thousand salary, it's a little less than forty grand salary on the average. I, I don't know if it's all the same supplement or the different amounts depending on, you know, how much somebody made.
Yeah, they vary.
But averaging a little under forty thousand on salary, then. That's, that was my question, thank you.
Commissioner? Uh, Commissioner Houseman?
Y- yes, so currently, is this, this supplement is in place. We're just, this is just codifying what we're already doing, correct?
The prior District Attorney offered salary supplements to his employees, and this would codify it for, uh, the current District Attorney as well.
So it's not any new money, it's what we're already doing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I wish you pleasure.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman.
All right, properly moved and seconded. Vote, please, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall.
Yes.
Commissioner Arrington.
Yes.
Abdul Rockman.
And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
We have ten minutes, uh, Commissioners.
On page eight, under Health and Human Services, two one dash zero zero two five, Public Works, request approval to amend a contract about competition to provide two Rapid View Model T seven six camera tractors.
Move the approval.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, let's vote, please, uh, Commissioner Houseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hall. Commissioner Arrington.
Yes.
Commissioner Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Two one dash zero zero two six, Public Works, press approval of resolution amending Fulton County Code of Ordinances to amend various sections to provide for.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a question.
All right, properly moved and seconded, Vice Chair has a question, Vice Chair.
Okay. I just want to ask, um, what led the EPD to require these modifications?
Yes, Commissioner, this is David Clark, Public Works Director. The EPD is asking all communities that have the same type of permit throughout the state to adopt this type of language. So something they targeted Fulton County for is something they have applied statewide.
Okay, and this is not due to anything happening? I know, um, in the past, there was something that happened that caused us to be fined and everything.
Correct, this, this has nothing to do with any past violations.
Right, and, um, just one thing that stood out to me when I was reading this, uh, the Agenda Item Summary, um, was number four under the proposed modification in Fulton County Stormwater Ordinance, um, was removal of the exemption for single-family and duplex lots. Very few residential properties exist within unincorporated Fulton. Um, I wanted a little bit more information about that.
Well, this, this ordinance is only going to be applicable to the unincorporated area of Fulton County along the Fulton Industrial District. And within the Fulton Industrial District, there are very few zoned residential properties remaining. There's a couple on Cascade Road, and that's about it. And so the, um, the ordinance is only going to be applied, uh, in the, in, in that part of the county.
Okay, and those single-family homes and duplexes that you're speaking of, are they? are they owner-occupied, or what?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Motion and second are ready.
All right, cast your votes, please. Houseman.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall. Arrington.
Yes.
Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And the motion passes, 5 yeas, zero names. Bottom of Page 8, 1-0027. Request approval of resolution in observance of the 92nd birthday of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., sponsored by Commissioner Abdul Rockman.
Commissioner?
Move room.
All right, cast your votes, please. Houseman. Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Arrington.
Yes.
Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And motion passes, 6 yeas, zero names. On Page 9, Board Appointments, 2-1-0028. Board of Trustees of Fulton County Employees Retirement System. Commissioner Morris has nominated Commissioner Ellis for full board reapportment to term ending December 31, 2021.
Move approval.
Second, cast your votes, please. Houseman. Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Arrington.
Abdul.
I vote yes.
And motion passes, 5 yeas, zero names. 2-1-0029, Board of Ethics, the Greater North. Fulton Chairman of Commerce recommends Jamie Bendo for a full board appointment to term ending February 12, 2024.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, vote, please. Houseman. Ellis.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Arrington.
Yes.
Abdul Rockman. I vote yes.
And motion passes, 5 yeas, zero names. On Page 10, 2-1-0031, Discussion sponsored by Commissioner Arrington. Resolution amending Article 2, Division 2, Subpart B of the Fulton County Code of Resolutions regarding membership and qualifications of the Board of Directors of Development Authority of Fulton County.
Commissioner Eric, did you want to take that up today, or?
We, we can, we can take it up next week. I just wanted to maybe just speak briefly. You know, we did this in, in accommodation for APS to include them so that they can be a part of the process, and now seems that they want to eliminate the process. And so if the process is eliminated, then why would we need to make the accommodation or have them on there? So I did reach out to the Chair of the Board, Mr. Estevas, to see if we could have some further discussions, but it seems incongruent for us to make an accommodation to include an APS representative, and then to have them advocate for the removal of the Development Authority or the inability for the Development Authority to develop inside the city of Atlanta. I'm open to perhaps a limit or a cap, but a complete elimination seems inappropriate, particularly given our accommodation to APS.
Okay, your comments are duly noted. Do you have any objection taking it up at the next meeting? We have more time to discuss it, because your argument makes sense.
I know, I'm fine with taking it up at the next meeting.
All right, so we'll hold that. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
No further items.
All right, no further items to come before us today. And we, without any objection, we are adjourned.
Be safe out there.
Yeah, thank y'all.